I'd like to call to order the June 17th special meeting of the Fall River School Committee. Deb, would you please call the roll?
Today's 21st.
What? I'm sorry, the 21st because I'm already lost. Today's June 21 on Planet Earth. Deb, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Dragu, Mr. Costa?
Here.
Mr. Hart?
Here.
Mr. Hetzel? Mr. Corey?
Here.
Ms. Lyerby?
Here.
Mayor Coogan?
Here. Salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and justice for all.
I do have one other announcement. Mr. Hetzler called me and told me he's on his way, so he'll be showing up later for attendance. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed to be acknowledged impermissibly. We do have one request for citizens' input. Colin Dias, Ray Street.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the school committee. I believe the public deserves to see the school committee discuss the superintendent's exit plan in public. I believe the public is fed up with the excuses to go into executive session under everything under the sun. They deserve to see their school committee members discuss the department business. The public deserves to know what the committee is going to do with their tax dollars. The public deserves to know what the committee is discussing with the superintendent. I believe the school committee and the attorney have gone out of their way to stifle the freedom of speech and the freedom of information of city residents. And that's something we're going to change after November. We're going to invite the public back into the discussion to have their thoughts and opinions shared without fear of censorship. We're going to allow them to inspect public documents. Now, another issue I would like to discuss is the other day, which was addressed by Mr. Pacheco before the meeting, which I thank you for. There was a picture posted by the superintendent of the Durfee Building Committee. Thank you to the superintendent, otherwise I would not have known this meeting took place. I understand that the public agenda was, it was just forgot to be posted on the city side, and that's okay, but I still have a question on why the committee is not recording its meetings. And even before COVID, the meetings weren't recorded either. And so why can't the public just see what the Durfee Building Committee is discussing? And lastly, I watched last week's meeting in great detail, and I'm not sure why the school committee kept on ruling one of its members out of order for asking a question about Twitter information. I think it's the duty of a school committee member to ask questions about school department business, and the taxpayers at home deserve to know all of the information. Again, stifling of public information, free speech, and a school committee member just doing what they were elected to do. And I believe this will soon be addressed in November. Thank you.
Thank you. I do have an announcement. Scott told me that we will not be going live with the presentations by the companies, that they'll come, we'll come back to a recorded live meeting after the three companies present, but that's, so there is some privacy with those presentations, and I told him that's fine. Committee of the whole, so first up tonight is a presentation and discussion of three student information systems. First up is Aspen. Go ahead, guys.
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, Kevin.
Can I, can I please ask for a, just a quick synopsis of what the purpose is of what we're here for, so that we know like where we're at?
Yeah, I kinda, I'm a little confused myself. I think the people that use it should be picking it. I think it's more or less to give us an introduction to the companies. And again, I don't, I don't, I'm kinda almost with you on that one, Kev. I don't know why we're here either, but we'll, we'll listen.
Okay, isn't there somebody in school administration? I know the superintendent is not here because he was on vacation slash sick, whatever that is, but.
Maria, Ms. Potts?
I can frame it actually, Ms. Dragu. So, this, this presentation actually was supposed to have taken place in May before the instructional and facilities subcommittee meetings. We were going to do an information session in May. We still had not had some of the department heads vet the third vendor, so we weren't ready, which we asked to delay the meeting. If you recall, when we were setting the meeting, because it was two subcommittee meetings, most of the committee people were overlapping, and the committee as a whole said they would rather, they would want to hear the whole thing, which is why we have, we put it during the finance subcommittee meeting. That's why we're here. This is really an information gathering session. We have been exploring, as we've said before, a new student information system with the lens of core functionality, customer service, training, student and parent access to information, and DESI reporting and guidance. We've had some focus groups with department heads leading their teams and looking, vetting each of the three vendors with their lens and asking their questions. And in addition, we actually sent out a survey to teachers and to administrators to weigh in on their experience using Aspen, although there, from the teacher's side, admin's side, central side, two different, three different ways that we use our student information system. Our next steps would be, after we hear, we want everyone to hear what we're hearing from these three vendors, and then to schedule any additional info sessions if needed, to clear up any questions, review the information, decide is this if and when it is something that we want to venture into, that we review the information. We ask for proposals that include all of the pieces of a high, an effective and efficient student information system, and then review those proposals and make some recommendations. But this is just part of the process. We are not ready to make any decisions. We're not asking for any votes. We're just making sure that you are as informed as we are and start that process.
And what would the vote of the committee be? Like, what is our role as individual members relative to the paperwork and stuff?
Well, I think that the committee, if, if and when that we complete the whole process, we would come to the committee with a contract, that the, a recommendation for the system if we were going to make a change, and then you as a committee would vote on that contract.
So we're not scoring anything? We're not doing any?
I don't believe, I don't, I'm not sure.
I think this is informational only, Kevin.
Yeah, this is today.
So we're not gonna be, do we have a bid where we have to score anything, none of that's happening?
Tonight?
No, in general, like for this process.
I think what I would do is depend on the experts. This is, I look at this as informational only, so we can hear what we're saying. Obviously, Aspen's been with us a while. There are two other companies. I look at people like Frank, Brian, Scott, the assistant superintendents, superintendents. Let them, let them come back to us later when they decide which way they want to go.
Yeah. The only reason why I ask some of these questions is because normally I want to be prepared, so I asked if we were going to get some information. Nothing. To come today, we find this on our desk, so that is always frustrating, just in general, when you get something like that. Appreciate what Assistant Superintendent Potts talked about. The process though needs to be clear if we're gonna score. I had a conversation earlier today with the central administrator, who said we were gonna be scoring things, and so I want to put my focus on, do I have to take those type of notes to be, so one member of central says that we're gonna be scoring, and then not doing finances, and so I'm a little frustrated, just on, just as a general rule. I'd be happy to hear what they say, but I'd want to know if we're scoring anything. And once again, if we get anything, I'd like to get it ahead of time, but that's only, I'm only speaking for myself as one member.
Mr. Pacheco?
I yield.
So, at the end of this process, the technical side, the, the presentation, what we would look to do is to develop a menu from within our staff and across the district of what we actually want included, and then that proposal would go out to the three vendors, so that they could send us that proposal. Basically, do you have this, do you have this, all of the way, all the way down the line, whatever items we're looking for, and the three vendors are on state bid, a state contract. So obviously, we have the ability to look at that in that manner, and then we get the pricing. And then at the end, we put that as a proposal to the committee, and the committee can weigh in on those, on those proposals. So if I misspoke and said voting, I mean, or grading, it will be at the end of all of this that we will look and see who can offer us the product that we're looking for. But it is a presentat, it's two different pieces. It's the technical side and then the financial side. Two different separate pieces.
So we'll have like a, whatever you call it, an RFP, RFQ, something along those.
So this is the process, because they're state contract, so we don't have to go through that particular piece. What we do know is those prices have already been bid. These companies have already bid on this work through the state. What we're looking for is, can they deliver everything we're looking for? And each one would put that component together. They may not be able to deliver it standalone, but they may have a subcontractor that they use to fill a particular application. We would look at that, and at that point, make our decision as to where we wanted to go. Two separate pieces, as I said, the finance piece and the presentation, because we shouldn't make a decision that is as important as this one on just price.
Or the other way around.
Exactly.
Regardless of price.
Right.
Some sort of a value judgment on what's the difference in price as well. But that'll come in at some point, basically. So that's not for tonight. We gotta do a whole nother process. We're talking months away.
Yes.
At least, at least.
Thank you. I yield.
Okay. Mr. Hart then, Mr. Costa?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I just wanted to clarify, I don't know if you mentioned it before the meeting, but specifically in detail, why isn't this going to be televised?
I guess, what was, what did you tell me, Scott? Why aren't we televising this live?
So.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, the reason why we had said this was that since Aspen is here first, it wouldn't be fair to them that their competitors are sitting in the other room, can stream all of this, listen to everything, listen to our questions back and forth, and they have a little bit of an advantage. And there's, the, the order of this was chosen and put in place, and they would have an unfair, I feel they would have an unfair advantage being first as opposed to being last and having all of that information put out front.
Right, but if it's just a presentation of these three vendors, I don't see where that's an issue, and I think, you know, it's, the people want to watch this, watch the meeting live, so I don't, I don't know.
That can be changed by the chairman. If he, if you'd like to do this and put it all live, then that would be up to you.
What's that?
Do you think it's fair to all the companies?
I don't, I mean, I'm not sure if this has happened before, but I just don't see the problem with it, with it being televised. It's, this is what the, the network, or if you want to say the channel is all about, but that's just me.
I do think that one of the vendors expressed concern because it's proprietary, and they wanted to know if it was going to be televised live prior to, you know, their presentation being all three, because everybody would have access to one another's prior to them presenting.
I yield.
Wouldn't they, I mean, we're gonna play it on tape tomorrow?
Yes. I think that right after the meeting's concluded.
Yeah, I'm just thinking like on the timing. The only thing I would suggest is that it's a public meeting. You know, everybody has a right to be here unless they voluntarily choose not to, and I'm not sure if that was explained to the companies, but to me, that's the way, it's a public meeting. We can't tell them they can't be at a public meeting. If they voluntarily want to say they'll agree to stay there, I think out of fairness, if they want to come in, they can watch the meeting. It's a public meeting. Maybe they've already decided across all three vendors that we're not going to do that, but I think it's at least fair to ask them.
Well, I guess, I really, I don't have a problem with it. How do you guys feel?
If it's all right for me to speak, my name is Jim Pinto. I'm the Aspen Sales Representative for Fall River. I don't think that we were prepared to have a public meeting where our information is shared with our competitors, and I would imagine that Infinite Campus and Power School probably feel the same way that I do. I've been doing this for 25 years, and I've never been in this format before. Typically, when we do presentations, they're separate, they're proprietary and those type of things. So this is extremely unusual, if that is the way you go, so.
You don't mind if it's shown right after your presentat, later on, after everybody's done?
Well, I mean, we would prefer that it's not shown at all, but as opposed to it being live, that's the better scenario for us, since we would all be able to see each other's presentations. But typically, like I said, this is highly unusual.
No, like norm, excuse me. Normally, you would, you would be in front of the IT, the technical people of this district privately, behind closed doors and going over your presentation.
A committee that's been established by the district.
Right.
And it's, it's all different folks throughout the community. But yeah, it's typically a school committee when districts choose to start looking at information systems. So it could be just with an IT team, it could be, but eventually, it's with the whole committee.
No, I get that absolutely, when it comes down to who the vendor might, might be, but, okay.
Mr. Costa?
I'll sit.
A sec. Kev?
Is there a, I don't believe that it's possible, but is one of the proprietary information, is that a reason to go into executive session, so that it's not a public?
I don't know that.
Just a, I mean, it's begging the question that if that's the case. I fully understand what they're saying or what the other people are saying, and I'm not, by no means am I trying to put everybody's business out there, like, you know, I get it. I would like to weigh in at some point on what you present, but if there's, if it's gonna create turmoil, I'm not sure if that's the best thing.
Yeah, Kevin, we weren't, we weren't aware that it was a public meeting.
I don't think.
I didn't think it was ever made, made that aware to us. We thought it was closed door session.
I mean, if you just listen to what this gentleman's saying, he wasn't aware that it was a public meeting.
It was never communicated to us.
I'm not sure how that's even possible, but it's, there's a public agenda, there's, you know, I'm not being critical.
Yeah, but the email that we received from the invitation to be here didn't say anything about a public meeting.
I see.
Yeah.
Well, with all due respect to the person who sent that email, it wasn't me, when the school committee meets, it's, everything's public. So this committee could not meet in private to talk to anybody about anything other than personnel within the district. So I don't, I don't think that any school committee could meet in private.
Yeah, we can't go into executive session. We can't go into executive session, so I don't know.
Dr. Corley communicated with all three vendors, right?
I'm sorry?
You communicated with all three vendors.
I mean, the three vendors that we would, that it would be a presentation to our school committee. In my mind, it's a public meeting, so I would consider that we can pay that our school committee even were public meetings.
This is a tough one. I would say we go with it the way we formatted it and let them see it on tape delay after, especially if they're comfortable doing it. If not, I'll take a motion to move it to all public.
No, I, I mean, I think that they're here. I don't want to. I, I just had, and I think you might probably understand, it, this is, it's a public access channel with the people watching it, citizens want to watch. But I totally get your side as well, but I think probably more, I think it probably should have been scheduled with an IT team here within the district, behind closed doors with you and the two other vendors. That's, that's just my perspective of it.
We absolutely understand your side as well, and we respect that. Again, we just weren't really prepared for that, and I'm sorry that the lady that said it was broadcast, the email, we just, it wasn't clear to us that it was public. And as I mentioned earlier, highly unusual. In 25 years, we've never been asked to do this. But let's move forward.
Let's move forward.
Yep.
One more question? Just on when we talk about proprietary information, is there things that may be in the presentation that you can just hold back if it gets to that point?
Absolutely.
And then we can, under separate, like, discussion.
Whatever you guys decide.
I wouldn't want you to say, yeah, show us all your proprietary information. We wouldn't want to do it to other people, so I think they came a long way. People, I'm guessing they don't live in Fall River, so I'd like to hear the presentation, but I think we gotta tighten things up moving forward on how we email and clear the people. Would that, I yield?
Okay. I guess you're going live. Just be cautious, guys, okay?
Thank you.
We'll let it rip?
Yeah.
Okay, you got a half an hour. It's 5:26. Go ahead, Aspen.
All right.
I'm just gonna go over there if that's okay.
Sure.
Well, good evening, everyone. Again, my name is Jim Pinto. I am Fall River's Aspen Sales Representative. I've been with Fall at Aspen for about 10 years now. With me tonight is Margaret Schnibby. Margaret is Fall River's Customer Relationship Manager. I know Margaret's been working closely with the Fall River's Aspen team for a long time, 2008, maybe?
Yeah, 13 years.
13 years. So Margaret is very familiar with Fall River's instance of Aspen. Also, Andy Pellet. Andy is our Director of Aspen Development. And Jamar Boyd is our National Sales Director in Canada, in America and Canada, is right? So Andy Pellet is actually going to lead our presentation this evening. And Jamar and I have been working very closely together for at least 10 years, and Jamar and I are, again, very familiar with Fall River's instance of Aspen. So before I turn it over to Andy, I'd like to take about five minutes at the most to talk a little bit about our collaborative partnership since 2004. So Fall River was one of four districts that chose X2 Aspen back in 2004. And here are some of the milestones since 2004. In 2006 and 2008, you selected some new modules with Aspen. So in 2004, student information systems were so much different than they are today. Typically, it was student demographics, managing student data, state reporting, scheduling, maybe some grade book and some attendance. That's it. So student information systems have come a long way since 2004. So in 2006, you adopted Aspen Massachusetts Health, and Fall River was a big part of that beginning. So health never existed in Aspen prior to that. And Fall River, as a collaborative partner, was very involved with the development and the testing and helping us to create that. Same thing with special education in 2008. Fall River was very involved with that. And in 2009, you went from self-hosting to provider hosting, which was a fall at hosting. And just recently, was about a year ago, you went, moved to the fall at Azure Microsoft Cloud, so you are cloud hosted presently. So to kind of give you a little bit of a history with our, our partnership and where we've come from. And we are very aware that we would not be where we are today without Fall River. So presently, in Massachusetts, we have 125 districts using Aspen. Outside of Massachusetts, we have 14 other states that are now using Aspen. When you went with Aspen back in 2004, it was a Massachusetts-centric student information system out of Hanger, Massachusetts. So we've expanded to 14 other states, and Aspen is now used in some of the largest districts across the country. Chicago Public Schools, Boston Public Schools, DC Public Schools, Richmond. And it's used extensively, extensively throughout Canada. And I want to share, one of our most interesting Aspen users is DODIA, the Department of Defense Education Activity. So basically, every military-based school throughout the world uses Aspen. So again, we are very appreciative of the partnership we've had since 2004, and we are very aware of how Fall River has helped us be who we are today, and we appreciate that. So one of the promises that we made back in 2004 has, and it hasn't changed since then, we haven't wavered from that promise that we would make Aspen to remain relevant and advantageous. So I share with you what a student information system looked like in 2004 versus what it looks like today. And Aspen looks a lot different. It's, it's more functional. There's so many more things that Aspen does since then. And again, Fall River has been a big part of that development and testing of Aspen as it evolved from 2004 to present. Andy's gonna share some of our more recent development, this past year, online enrollment at Core within Aspen, our social emotional support. We have Google Classroom, which I know a lot of your teachers use Google in the classroom. And currently, I know there's not a good integration between Google and, and Aspen and the grade book, but we now have, if a teacher uses Google, they'll be able to have the grades automatically go to the grade book. So Andy will share some of that, and he'll also share our new mobile interface, so we have a whole new development of our mobile platform. So Andy's gonna share all that with you. But here, here is the agenda that we're going, so Andy's gonna start with the Core Sysfunctionality, student and parent, the family portal access, state reporting, customer service, and ongoing training and support. So again, thank you very much, and we want to say how much we appreciate this partnership over the years. Thank you.
Hi there, I'm Andy. As Jim said, I'm the Director of the Aspen Product Line, and so I oversee what goes into the product, how that gets developed and delivered to customers. And so these were the areas that you outlined that you wanted to hear a little bit more about, and so we'll take them in the order in which you see them, and that's me when I'm wearing a tie. I wanted to start off with the way, way back end on, on Aspen, the piece that most people don't see because there's some unique characteristics about that on the market. So Aspen's performance, we know that performance is tremendously important to our districts, especially large districts like yourselves, and that's why we modernized the architecture. We moved into cloud hosting, so it's now hosted in Microsoft Azure, where you'll find many Fortune 500 companies are hosted. Aspen is a flexible platform, so in, in addition to all of the great features that you get out of the box with the system, we have an extensive personalization and configuration capability that allows us to tailor the SIS to each district's individual needs. And a lot of our districts have taken advantage of that in many interesting ways. For example, building their own RTI workflows right on top of the Aspen architecture. Aspen's built on a single database, so rather than acquiring and building separate products and then mashing them together and trying to sync that data, we built it from the ground up, so it's on a single system, a single architecture. And this is important because it makes it very easy to manage that data. When you make a change in one place in the system, it's available everywhere instantaneously. This helps with state reporting, I'll talk a little bit about. But it also helps with our interoperability, getting that data out and connecting it to other systems. And so we've been working a lot recently on our interoperability. Everything from old systems that still need CSV exports to modern APIs. And so I just highlighted, as Jim was talking, an important initiative that's emerging over the summer. Certainly throughout the pandemic, we've been building up our partnerships with various LMS vendors. And so at the end of the summer, we're hoping to go live with these Alpha Pilots that we have. And Jim mentioned Google, so we have about 20 Alpha districts that are currently utilizing the product. We're looking to add a couple of more Alpha testers, and we're hopeful that Google will move this to a public beta in September, and all of our customers will move on to this. And again, you can pass the grades from the LMS back into the Aspen gradebook, so that allows teachers some flexibility in where they want to do their grading and leverage some of those third-party tools if they prefer them over the Aspen native tools. And then finally, fall at services. What really distinguishes us in the market is that we're not just selling you technology. We're a service-oriented company. We're interested in partnering with our districts, and we try and find ways to get everyone successful, not only on our products, but also the whole ecosystem that you're building and making sure that we're a part of that and that we can provide the, the services and technology that you need. Talking about SIS functionality, you may or may not be familiar with all of the areas of Aspen. There's a whole rich array of features, as you can imagine, across the whole spectrum inside of the product. And it goes from the, as Jim said, the traditional SIS functions that you would expect there, managing student demographic information and contact information, all the way through instructional management, communication and collaboration, and more. And as Jim said, almost all of this was built in collaboration with Fall River. And so we thank you, and we're, we're very grateful to have that partnership. And so that's why we offer you a lot of great features at a really great price. And so we want you to continue to take advantage of that. In addition to sort of the core pieces, we do have some add-ons that you can optionally purchase. So you currently own the curriculum management, the health and the special education pieces. Also available is an integration with your school library through the Destiny Library Manager System. We've just recently launched our online registration, which supports new and returning student registrations. And we're launching a social and emotional support module that allows you to track student needs and services that you're providing to students around social, emotional health. And then coming soon, within the next nine to 12 months, we're looking to also make available an analytics solution. So in addition to the native reporting that you have inside of Aspen, this would allow customers to add on a visualization suite, very likely Microsoft Power BI and Microsoft Azure, as well as a product that we offer called My Destiny. This is a library of 50,000 eBooks and 100,000 resources that allow you to build lessons and assign homework. And so it allows you to quickly build very rich and engaging activities, especially around student literacy. around student literacy. And so I say this, some of you had the privilege of meeting with us over the past couple of weeks, as you had questions about the product, as well as engaging around what the full roadmap is. And so we don't have the time for the full roadmap today, but this gives you an idea of the breadth of the Aspen offerings, as well as the Follett offerings, when it comes to our SIS ecosystem. And so I want to drill into the specific area that you asked about and look a little bit deeper at actually the functionality that we have. And so I've decided to, so based on the agenda, we're highlighting the parent and student information. And so here's a screenshot of the current parent portal. You can see that it's responsive. It'll display on both a laptop, as well as a mobile device such as a phone. And along the left-hand side of the screen, you see a whole bunch of different destinations that a parent can go to. I'm just going to highlight five today in the interest of time and give you an idea of the functionality that sits inside of here. Naturally, there's grade information. So parents can go in, they can check what their current, their child's current average is. They can look at individual assignments and see how they're scored. On the phone there, you can see some of those assignments and the color-coded score on that. You can also locate missing work so that you can help your child catch up on any late work that they have. If you don't check the portal regularly, you can sign up to get assignment score alerts. So you can set a threshold that says, every time my son doesn't, scores a D or lower on assignment, we can send you an email, or you can get an app push notification that that's happened. So even when you're not actively visiting the portal, we can push information to you to let you know that there's important information for you to go in and look at. We have attendance naturally. And so we're looking at high school attendance, we're looking at their list of classes, so we can check to see if they've cut any of those classes. We can also see daily attendance, so we can see what the, for their daily total is across the year. And again, you can set an alert so that you get a notification anytime your child is marked absent. Terms of homework, there's a couple of ways to do this. On the phone, you'll see we have a list view. It allows you to quickly see what's due today and tomorrow. And so there's a little notification circle there that shows me I have three due today and one tomorrow. And if you want to plan further ahead, you can go into the calendar view. And as your teachers place homework onto that calendar, you can see days or weeks ahead and make some plans around what your child has to have accomplished. You can circulate your report cards electronically. So you have access to report cards through the portal. Parents get an announcement on the home screen that a new report has been made available to them. When they click on that, they get a high-quality PDF that you have designed. So they can view that through the web interface. They can download and save it if they want to keep a copy of it. They can even print it and put it on the refrigerator, if that's what they'd like to do. The last area I wanted to highlight is forms. So you can request information from your parents, such as an acknowledgement or, you know, other types of information that you'd want to solicit from them, that you want to gather paperlessly. And so some of the examples might be things like a field trip form, or allowing students or parents to make an online meeting request with the counselor and have that routed to them in Aspen. During the pandemic, some of our schools even did their daily attestations for COVID inside of the system. So do you have a fever? Have you been exposed to anybody who has had COVID, so on and so forth? They were capturing that information electronically. And so you can see the list of forms on the phone there. If I open up that form, you can see the types of information that we can capture. They can type in some text, dates, and selections, checkboxes, things like that. So your forms can get pushed electronically, and you can gather all of that information from your parents. In addition to that, you have the full Aspen experience. So parents have access to conduct and discipline, if you'd like them to, transcripts, full schedules, fees, and things like that. Students have access to things like electronic course requests for the upcoming year, so they can build their schedule, they can submit homework and collaborate, and much, much We know there's a lot to do also on staff and other administrative views, which is why we're in the process of building out a completely new user interface. A preview of that is launching in July. So these pieces are getting put together and will be available for you to start taking a look at. It's going to have things like icon-driven navigation that allows you to maybe find your way a little bit easier through the system. Again, we like this idea of having the same experience, whether you're accessing it from a laptop, or a tablet, or a phone. And we want to bring that modern aesthetic that I think everybody expects out of a web application these days. So more white space, a little bit easier readability. And so watch for that to be rolled out over the next several releases, as we build out each interface for each type of user on the system. I'm going to switch gears to state reporting for a couple of minutes. We're experts in state reporting. We have 122 LEAs that do their submissions through us, with 100% certification rate on that. And because, through all of this experience, we know that you don't just need great tools, you also need great support, and you also need great communication. And Follett excels at doing those things. And so for the next couple of slides, I'm going to talk a little bit about some of the innovative tools that we have, how we communicate, and some of the support that you currently Let's say you've submitted, and the state comes back and says, we have a student, Darren Jones, and he has an error code of 8710. Well, I don't know what that means. And I would, even our best state reporting support team within your school probably don't either, which is why Aspen's built all of that troubleshooting into the screens on which you would make those changes. So in this example, I would go and look up Darren Jones in the application. I'd see a screen that has his name and his birthdate and his emergency contact information. And I'd click to switch into troubleshooting mode, and the screen will refresh. I'll be able to select that code, and it will tell me, here's what that error code means. And moreover, here's what you need to do in order to fix it. And then finally, here's those three fields in which you need to fix that information. And we'll put them all on one screen. So you can find it, you can correct the error, and now you're ready to resubmit and have that data be accepted by the state. All of that SIF transaction is real-time, but we log all of it through what we call the SIF outbox. And so you can see all the data that was transmitted, whether it was accepted. And so this gives you complete insight into what's happening on its way to the state, so you can more easily troubleshoot and stay on top of those errors and get certified very quickly. And then finally, Aspen also has the ability to validate data as people are doing the data entry. So you can prevent bad data from even getting into the system. And so you can customize the error message that gets displayed to your staff. And it basically says, if this field equals that, then that field has to equal something else. And it replicates all of the business rules that the state places on this data, so that you can replicate those in the system and have that to your advantage. But it's not just about those tools, it's also the service-oriented approach. And as I said, we're a service-oriented partner, and we're striving for those partnerships with our districts. And so over the next couple of slides, as I talk through all the things, I want you to think about that community of support that we have around Aspen. Aspen has a dedicated state reporting team. It's an agile development team. They have their own product managers, business analysts, engineers, building all of it out. And they've built a comprehensive and integrated approach to state reporting. And so I talked a little bit about that customization framework that some of our districts take advantage of. We do too. It's a way that we can quickly roll out new changes based on state requirements without requiring you to upgrade the system. And so we can make those changes, we let you know when those are getting pushed. And in a couple of minutes, we push out like the new rule set, or new troubleshooting screens for you to have. Nobody communicates more. And our policy is to communicate early and often. We use a variety of different tools. We might email you with some information about upcoming sessions. We might schedule some online meetings that you can attend. We have webinars that I'll talk about in a moment, as well as an online knowledge base, so you can always have access to that information. And it's not just from us to you. It's the Follett State Reporting Team, plus our on-call technical support team, which is also supporting you all the time, as well as Massachusetts DSE and you, the district. And unless all of those pieces come together, state reporting doesn't happen. So throughout the reporting season, you have four different types of submissions that you have to make. And we have those seasonal things for just-in-time information. So we'll give you a regular communication about any changes that we know, any SIF challenges, maybe the alerts that you might run into. And then we'll open up a monthly Q&amp;A session. This is an open venue where we take all of that development team that I just talked about, and we make them available for you for any questions that you might have. So you can tune in, ask a question, you can hear what other districts are asking, and you can collaborate with us in real-time around some of the support there. We also do scheduled workshops, in which we try and get DSE to show up as well, so that we can triangulate that support. So you're hearing what's happening, not just between us and the state, not just between you and the state, not just between us and you, but all of us together in one room, so we can have that clear communication across everyone. And if you can't make those meetings, don't worry, because we've got it all up in the knowledge base. So we record those sessions, we make them available so that people can watch them at their leisure, they can go in and see all of those topics recorded, so they can never miss a beat. We also have presentations that we've placed in there, that we've done on some of the Q&amp;A calls, that provide some learning too. So you can go in and say, well, teach me about the top five errors that you would encounter in SIMs and how to resolve them. And so I can start to make myself better at doing my own state reporting job. And that's just the state reporting customer support. Your customer support extends much further beyond that. So from an online perspective, we have a variety of resources available to you. Within the product, there's the Help button. It's context-sensitive, so if you're on a screen and you don't know what's going on, hit that Help button, and we'll take you to a Help article that'll explain it for you. We also have the Support Portal. This is more for our technical staff, but they can see some of the backend configurations that can be made and understand how those might impact the system and how they can manage and improve their system. And then for your front-end users, we have the Follett Community, where they can learn how the application works, watch videos of the parent portal, and so on and so forth. There's also a online forum where some of our customers interact with each other. Terms of technical support, you have access to phone and online technical support and a variety of tiers of escalation that we can do, depending on the nature of the requests. So you can log that ticket via phone, or you can go online and you can log it electronically. It doesn't matter to us, either way, you're going to get individualized, focused support around that information. And so I want to stress this, because again, not everyone will offer this to you. When you pick up that phone and you dial our number, you will talk to a person, a person that's been trained on Aspen. And if they can't solve it in real-time on the phone with you, they might say, let me work on this, I'll call you back. If they need to escalate it up to a Tier 2 or a Tier 3, they can even get to me. And so at some point, you might find me on the phone, if it's that big of a deal or that important of a resolution. And then finally, relationship management. So beyond just the typical, you're the customer, we're the vendor, we want to have that collaboration, which is why we give you a dedicated customer relationship manager. This person is working behind the scenes on your behalf 24/7. They're telling me about things that they heard from you that need to be added to the product. They're telling me about problems or concerns. They're also telling me good news that I get to share with the rest of the team when we've had a success or something cool has been done that maybe we want to let other districts know about in our next user group. You can have access to consulting and customization services. So if you'd like to talk about, I want to reconfigure the gradebook, or I want to try a different scheduling functionality, you can get a consultant and have some one-on-one time with that person. You can join a weekly Q&amp;A call. So in addition to the state reporting format that I talked about, we have a general call around just Aspen in general, we call it Aspen Answers. There's also ones just for Aspen scheduling, because there's always a scheduling question every week of the year. We can invite you into early adoption programs, so if you want to get access to some of the features before they're released to the public, you can do that and provide us with some feedback. We have focus groups, if you don't want to adopt the software, but you want to know about it and provide feedback, you can do that as well. Two of the more prominent ones we have are on special education and state reporting, but we certainly have ones around user interface and so on and so forth. Those are organized by Follett. We also have user groups that are organized by other districts. And so you have access to visit with other districts, either in our presence or without our presence, to talk about how you're using Aspen, tips and tricks, maybe some of the challenges that are really hyper-local to you. And so you have that network of people. And so you might not know what you need, but if you've got a problem, we want you to email. And if you, even if you don't know, like, one of the problems is, I don't know who my customer relationship manager is. No problem, just email aspenCRM@follett.com. It'll go to everybody, we'll find out what your need is, and we'll tell you what we can do for you. And we'll tell you the types of things, whether it's a consulting or joining a user group, we're there to help you and get you connected with the resources that you need. And then in a more formal format, let's talk for a couple of minutes about training. I think this is really important for you. When it comes to learning Aspen, there's a couple of aspects around the way that we do this. There's the delivery style, we really prefer to have live sessions, we really prefer to have hands-on practice in Aspen, we feel that that's the best way to learn. And so when we time these, we try to do just-in-time scheduling, which is, right as you're about to start doing your job in Aspen, we'd like you to take that training, because it's going to stick and you're going to use it immediately, rather than having something months earlier that by the time you get around to using it, you'll forget. And so I want you to know about our training team, that all of them are former educators, have worked on Aspen, they're in the K-12 space. They have a combined 85 years of experience amongst them, so not just in Aspen, but in education in general. So they're a tremendous resource. They understand who the people are that are attending those training sessions, and they're tailoring their presentations to meet the needs of people who are on the ground doing the work. So what do we offer? Well, we've got live options, and that can be either remotely managed or in-person. We also have some on-demand and self-paced options that are available to you. And then on an annual basis, we have special workshops. So when it comes time to build the schedule, we offer workshops around schedule building. And we really want you to take advantage of those. There's a lot that you can take advantage of here. I've listed out a number of topics here. This is not the exhaustive list, but I think it gives you an idea of the breadth of what we do. And these are not generic sessions, these are session topics and the intended audience, so that you get a flavor for it. But everything that we do is tailored specifically to your needs. So if a district comes to us and says, we want to do something around enrollment management, and it's not just the registrars, it's also school secretaries, no problem, we'll tailor that to make sure that all the job responsibilities and the specific topics, like we do attendance around here this way, all of that can be handled inside of the training session. And so again, just as with the CRM, if you're not sure what you need, reach out to Aspen-Training, send them an email, and we can help figure out and give you a plan for what it is that you might want to deliver. And so I want to close on this slide, which is, I think, our recommendation, having had a chance to speak with a lot of different members of your staff over the past couple of weeks, as we've given them some information that they inquired about. You've been on the system for, since 2004, 17 years. I imagine that you've had a little bit of turnover over 17 years, so the people that were there, maybe you've gotten a lot of new faces over those years. I think there's some knowledge gaps there that we can close with some training. So with a focused training plan, we can close those knowledge gaps, make sure that everybody is up to speed and feeling confident and feeling supported on the system. I think one of the challenges after you've been on for a while is that you forget what people don't know. And so let's make sure that they have what they need. And so I've put together, you know, an exemplar here of what that might look like, putting together some non-teaching staff and the things that they might need, as well as differentiating again between what an elementary school teacher needs versus the secondary school. Maybe look at your scheduling teams. I know some questions came in from your nurses, maybe look at nursing. There are other topic areas on that previous slide that we could certainly dive into. But if you'd like to engage with us and move on to the next step, this might provide a template for us to start that conversation. And with that, I think I've made it in my 30 minutes. And we're open to questions and answers. We can go back to one of the slides that I had, if you want to get into it in more depth. We can tackle any topics that we didn't cover that you'd like to cover today.
That was right on the button, guys, for half hour. So we allocated 15 minutes for questions, so I'm going to ask the committee to just ask targeted, pointed questions, that would be great. I have one myself, but I'm going to defer to Mr. Corey.
Hey, nice job, guys, thank you. Just have a couple. Google Classroom and grades entry, will this create more efficiency for the teachers?
Yes. So all of the LMS integrations are designed around the concept that your teachers want to do all of their work in that other system. And so to this point, we've been able to create classes automatically for them, manage the students as they add and drop into those automatically for them. But when it came to grading, they would have to look at those grades, and eventually they'd have to go to Aspen and put them in. And if they wait until And if they wait until the end of the posting period, say, "Oh, it's term three, I guess I better move my grades over," parents don't get the advantage of seeing that through the portal. And really, Google doesn't have a very strong parent experience on that platform. This allows the teacher to push those whenever they want. So it could be every day, every hour, every week. Whenever they've got scores, they push a button and those scores are replicated into Aspen.
Second question, thank you for that, is what does SEL support mean when you say you offer social emotional learning support? What does that mean?
Yeah. So when we look at social emotional learning, we think there's a couple of components to it. There's an instructional component, and we imagine you're probably purchasing curriculum and delivering that into the classroom. There's also a support mechanism, right? When a student starts to fall behind because of maybe some of those social emotional issues, you have things like MTSS, maybe an RTI program, other ways to intervene and get them that instruction. The piece that we find missing for most districts is if they've got a student who might be showing suicidal tendencies, or has had a death in the family, or teen pregnancy, or even is just struggling academically, they slip through the cracks. And schools are managing that on like shared spreadsheets on a drive where they say, "Well, put that information together and we'll meet as a team every couple of weeks and go over that sheet." Our social emotional support module provides basically a case management tracking around that. It's an open-ended intake where just about any type of student could get recommended for any reason. And then you have staff members that can choose from the services that you have and line up those services and make sure that those students are receiving those services. And now it's attached to that student record. So as they move into ninth grade and 10th grade and 11th grade, you have that historical history of challenges that they've had or services that they've received.
So it's like a child's portfolio from their earlier experiences.
Yeah.
All those answers are in the file, and they can be called up. At any point, is confidentiality ever breached?
No, this is an important part. On those spreadsheets, it's usually very low security. You have all of the Aspen security built in, which means user roles as well as individual fields and records can be turned off and prevented. So only your counselors can get access to it, for example, and teachers won't even know that it's there.
Thank you very much. How are you, Mr. Chair?
Anybody else? Mr. Coste, then.
Thank you for the presentation. So you have been providing services for Fall River since 2004. And so you're familiar with our platform as it exists now?
Yes.
And so has that changed since 2004 in terms of what we've done with it here in the district?
Yes.
And the reason I ask for it is, my understanding is, some months back, we had reached out for some technical support regarding our platform and was told that it had changed or had evolved, if you will, or had been changed so much that your folks didn't know enough about the platform or what we were using to provide that type of technical support. And so I'm just trying to figure out, is that something that we do in conjunction or collaboration with you, or is that something that we do internally here in terms of the changes to the platform?
So generally speaking, we don't, I am not familiar with this. I don't think Margaret's familiar with the specific communication. And so I think in terms of that, next steps are, let's elevate that to her and our level so that we can start collaborating on the right footing for that. I imagine that it is because of some of the configurations that you can place into the system, that you might have very specific goals as well as, you know, even processes, policies in the system. And so what we'd want to do is understand exactly what those policies are and make sure that we can enforce them. We do, from time to time, get inquiries from districts that say, "I want to do this, can the system do it?" And we consult with them to find ways to make that happen. It's typically around grading policies, but perhaps it's around more for Fall River.
Okay. Well, I'll talk, I guess, offline and share some of the concerns.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Larivee, please.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. It was nice to get in deep and have a little better understanding. But I do have a question. My colleague, Mr. Corey, asked about SEL. You had a slide up basically stating that you're presently operating, some content is coming in future. Is the SEL content in place now? Is that something we're using, or is that one of the things that is coming in the future?
Great question. So it's available now, it's an add-on capability. And so what we would normally do is, we would engage with you to demonstrate that specific piece of functionality. So you'd reach out to Jim. Jim would set up a demo either live or remote, and you would have access to some of that material. You could learn more about it. You can engage with us around whether it's something that you're interested in.
Yes, and I'll add to that. So I've already engaged with the district. So we had some special online sessions that were attended by the district, and we had social emotional support as well as our new online registration. And the district expressed interest. And I know that we did a demonstration already on the LR, presented some financial figures and different things and some specifications. And the social emotional support is, that conversation has just kind of started, but we have already been in communication with the district and talking about how that may help the district.
Okay. Thank you for that. My next question, if you don't mind. Same kind of way, but forms and push notifications, you know, the parental communication, is that in place right now, or is that on its way?
That's all in place right now. And so if you'd like, again, we can engage in a brief, you know, 30-minute informal call with me or somebody from our team, we can demonstrate it and talk about how to set it up.
Right.
Some districts like it, some districts don't like it. I think, you know, the world is moving towards real-time, and so increasingly, people who have not adopted it in the past are suddenly going, "I wonder if I can turn that on now." So we'd be happy to show you. Forms, what I showed you here is all available to you to build, and so we can talk through how you can build some forms. We have some samples that we can share. And then, again, throughout our community of users, there's a lot of really cool stuff that they've done that we can make available that you might be able to install on your system and modify and take advantage of.
Thank you. My last, oh, go ahead.
I'll add a little bit to that. So I discussed the idea of that collaborative partnership that we've had since 2004, and it's been a good partnership. But I also think that we can improve what we're doing. So at this juncture, I believe it's in both our best interest to really have, schedule a time and sit down and say, "This is what you're using, probably 25% of what's possible with Aspen. And are these other things something that you like? The push notifications, some of the other things that you may not be using, maybe you want to take advantage of that." And I think Aspen is a huge system, and there's all this various functionality. You have various user roles, curiosity, user community, and people are responsible for different areas. So I think we need to, and I'm saying, we need to do more of the heavy lifting, maybe organize that and maybe help you understand the bigger picture. How can we take advantage of some of all these things that Andy showed you? Because there are some fantastic things that you may or may not be doing. So I think there is room for improvement for that. And I think we can improve this collaborative partnership and communicate better and maybe work out, here's where we are today, here's where we want to go, how do we get there?
Right. That was exactly my last question, is there anybody on your team that, is there room to improve your districts, not just Fall River?
Yeah.
To reach out and say, "You're not doing this correctly." Are you monitoring? Are you watching? Are you engaged in what your school systems using X2 are doing?
Yeah, I'll let Margaret speak to that.
They're all pointing at me.
Yeah.
Yes, I think that that's what the customer relationship manager team does. We have a customer relationship manager for every district, not just the large ones, and we can reach out to all of them. We have, as Andy mentioned, a lot of ways to collaborate with our customers individually as well, to collaborate and talk about ways that you can use more of the product. And like Jim said, ways you can get from what you're using now to what you would like to use in the future.
Thank you.
I'll say one last thing. Sorry. I think the majority of our communication, a lot of times, one-on-one is with the technology team or the Aspen team. But we're talking about a lot of users throughout the community that are not part of that team. And there may be some needs that are unidentified yet or whatever. So I think there's a lot of room for improvement where we can work closer together and have a better experience than, like Mark described a little earlier. I think none of us want to hear that.
Yeah.
We were surprised to hear that. So we, that's.
I was too.
Yeah. So trust me, we know all executive level leaders, my boss, Jamar, doesn't want to hear that, and that's not the way we do. So if that's happening, it can be easily fixed. So thank you.
So there seems to be a disconnect, in my opinion, between the higher levels of the administration for the Fall River schools and what you just presented to us. I had worked in the district, I've used your system. Comparing to other ones in the neighboring districts, I think it's almost like a Cadillac in a lot of ways. We talk about that. I think financially, it's been a good partnership where we get a discount over the years and, you know, so I'm not very quick to just say, "Let's just go in another direction." So I, along with the rest of the members, have asked, "Why is it that we're moving? Why are we changing this thing?" Superintendent told me at a subcommittee meeting, when I first learned of this, I said, "Why are we even moving away?" And he said, "Because Aspen sucks. Public, on record, people can see it." And I'm like, "What do you mean? What's this all about?" So that originally got me to be thinking, "Wait a minute here, am I missing something that I thought the system worked? I talked to a lot of people that work for the district, and I wasn't hearing that this program's lousy." So when we look, we talked about the reason why we're even exploring alternatives, says, "We recognize limited internal capacity to leverage the platform, day-to-day reporting." That's not what I just watched. "We were struggling to schedule timely training and support that would enable us to make the most of our current system." That's not what I just saw. "We saw little opportunity for shareable live dashboards for data sharing to inform planning at a time when we needed information at our fingertips." Once again, that's not what I saw. "And we felt the need for a more dynamic system, one that we didn't think the current partner could provide." So what am I missing? Have you not delivered on the requests from the district? Is there a list of complaints? Do you have access to show us the various requests and complaints that were not taken care of over a tenure here?
Yeah, that's a good question. Well, so I will say this, right? In our recent conversations with various staff members in preparation for today that led you to probably having this meeting today, there was definitely a knowledge gap. It was, "I've learned the system because I've been on it for five years, but is there a way to do X? Oh, sure there is." And so I think that, I think the training would go a long way to trying to uncover some of those things for people who may not know what the system is capable of. And then in terms of tickets, obviously, we do have a full history of every ticket that's ever been submitted since 2004. So we could certainly go through that and if, you know, if it's necessary to look through and see if there's anything missing. But I'll share Jim's last comment, which is, there's certainly room for improvement in terms of our visibility and access to everybody here in this room. So it's not our intention to not be accessible and to have availability to have these conversations. We'd like them to not be tremendously high-stakes conversations. We think there's room for us to engage around some of the needs. And so certainly tell us what it is that you're looking for that you're not currently getting, and we'll make ourselves available. I'm up in Andover, it's a little bit of a tough drive down 93. Margaret's got a little bit easier, she's on the South Shore, but we're happy to come and visit and talk through these things in person.
Almost out of time, Kev.
Yep. So have you seen, has there been any requests to your company that you have not been able to fix, working with our people here?
Ken, no, not to my knowledge.
I mean, I think that's just a definite issue. I'd like to get copies of all of those requests so we can take a look at it. The last piece that I'd like to request is, I'm curious to see how many, how much interaction there has been amongst central office administration. So if we can get a log-on sheet to show how many people are actually using this on a day-to-day basis amongst our top-level administrators?
Oh.
As well as principals, I'd appreciate it. With that, I yield, thank you.
And I appreciate you rushing up, Kev. I got one question, please.
Yes.
The forms to go home to parents, do you have the ability to, I'll keep it simple, flip a switch and go to Spanish, kameh, so that on our database, when we're sending stuff home, we can change languages?
Yes. Yes. So the form has text inside of it. That text can be translated into various languages. There is a language setting in the system, so Spanish speakers select Spanish to see Aspen in Spanish. And those forms will detect that and will present themselves in Spanish.
So if I'm mailing home 500 report cards and 20 of those kids speak kameh, that's coming out kameh.
Correct. Right, correct. Report cards especially.
So it's set up on, it's set up in the system that, what is your home language?
Gotcha.
Based on your home language that's identified into the system, those report cards are generated to the parents.
Always been a struggle in Fall River, and I appreciate your honesty, and I appreciate you staying on schedule. It made tonight go much better. And again, thanks, we've been with you guys for a long time, so we appreciate you coming down.
We appreciate you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ten seconds. We're just waiting till the next company gets set up. It's Infinite Campus.
Yes. Okay.
Is somebody going to control this?
Yes.
All right, so now let's do this.
Okay. Okay. I had brought in some additional materials, so I see my bag over there outside of what I had emailed, so I believe, she's passing them out. Thank you. My name's Sherry Grayson, and I have two colleagues who were not able to be here today, so they're Zooming in. So Scott is being kind enough to allow them to have complete control and show you some more in-depth details of the product. Paul and Caitlin, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, yes. Okay, great. There's no display. Still nothing?
Yeah, it's good.
Okay. Okay. We'll get started.
Okay, so just so you understand, you have a half an hour.
Okay.
And then 15 minutes of questions.
Okay.
And we really appreciate you coming down.
Okay. Oh, great, thank you.
Go ahead into the campus.
Thank you for having me. So we're starting at 6:16 then?
There you go.
Okay, great. As I mentioned, my name is Sherry Grayson, and I'm the Northeast Sales Manager for Infinite Campus. I believe I may have been on some Zoom calls with some of you over the last month or so to, you know, show you some of the core products along with some of the other modules. So thank you for having me here today. I have two colleagues down in New York who were not able to attend, who I have with me on Zoom, an application specialist and also a business administrator, a business developer who's going to go over some of the state reporting. Paul and Caitlin, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, yes. Okay, great. There's no display. Still nothing? Okay. Okay. Okay, we'll get started.
Okay, so just so you understand, you have a half an hour.
Okay.
And then 15 minutes of questions.
Okay.
And we really appreciate you coming down.
Okay. Oh, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me. So we're starting at 6:16 then?
There you go.
Okay, great. As I mentioned, my name is Sherry Grayson, and I'm the Northeast Sales Manager for Infinite Campus. I believe I may have been on some Zoom calls with some of you over the last month or so to, you know, show you some of the core products along with some of the other modules. So thank you for having me here today. I have two colleagues down in New York who were not able to attend, who I have with me on Zoom, an application specialist, and also a business administrator, a business developer who's going to go over some of the state reporting.
This is being recorded?
Okay.
And what's going on? Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
What I'm going to do is I'm going to actually pass this over to my colleague Paul Paolela, the app specialist. So Paul, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, we can see everything you're doing, too.
All right, ready to go, right? Okay, well, good evening, everyone. So that's a little different, but very good. So my name is Paul Paolela, Application Specialist for Infinite Campus. Let's get right into it. For any of you folks that might have been on some of these presentations, you know that there's a lot of core functionality built into Infinite Campus. Today, we're going to focus on a few of them, so let's go ahead and get right into it. All right, so here's the agenda we put together for today. We're going to start with a demonstration of the core assist functionality, and we're going to jump into campus parent, campus student. Then I want to pass it over to Sherry, and she's going to go over ongoing training and resources and customer support. And then Caitlin will wrap things up with state reporting. All right, so as some of us might be aware of, lots of courses functionality, very important that everything is built off of a single database. And you'll see some of the benefits of that as we go through the presentation. Very easy to use navigation, which we're going to go through, built-in messenger tools, letter builders. We're going to cover a little bit of attendance office, behavior, health office, all part of the core system, lots of ad hoc reporting tools, and scheduling as well. Just a reminder, lots of blended learning tools built into the product. So the ability to schedule blended learning groups, the ability for parents and/or students to use the virtual attendance tools. So if they are not physically in school, they can still check into their classes. Lots of e-learning instruction. And on the health side of things, daily health log survey where parents and/or students can log in COVID-19. Hopefully, hopefully some of these are going away, but I just wanted to remind everyone that we were up for the task. So, you know, a little over a year ago, when the pandemic hit, these blended learning tools were developed in a rapid fashion. Campus Messenger built throughout the product, regardless of your role, as long as you have tool rights to the messenger tools, you have the ability to create your own messages, have those delivered either internally, email, and there's even a text and voice option as well. They live throughout the product. There's one specifically for attendance, behavior, emergency, staff messenger, one built within the scheduling tool as well. Every message that gets sent gets tracked and archived in the message log system. Custom forms, another important piece here. Just think of any form you want to bring into Infinite Campus, there's a tool that allows you to do that. This is an example of an RTI student referral. You have the ability to have parts of the form pre-populate, so you can embed Infinite Campus fields anywhere you want, like you can see here in the top header. All of this information will pull into that form once you add it to a student record. Other parts of the form is interactive. What does that mean? You can do things like make any field required. Any of the interactive fields or fillable fields will then become reportable. So you can actually run a report or run a list of all the students that have that particular form and see the information that was filled into that form in detail, like you can see in this example. And then finally, these forms can be put out on the parent portal, e-signature capabilities as well. So a parent can receive a form, or a student can receive a form from the parent-student portal, digitally sign it, submit it right back in, and then these forms can be managed from the admin side. All right, let's dive into the product. I'm going to jump in as a full admin, and the first thing I'd like to go over is just the basic navigation of Infinite Campus. So a couple of things here, you've got your main menu here on the left side. Now, all the tools you see listed within your menu is based off of your tool rights and permissions. In addition to tool rights and permissions, you also have calendar or building permissions, as well as school years. So as a full admin, you can see I have access to multiple and many years of data. I don't have to log out or log back into the system. Again, this is a single database. If I want to view or search for a student that I had, that maybe I want to view attendance records for a student from the 1819 school year, I just click on 1819, and now I can go ahead and search. Same thing with your buildings, based off of your calendar rights, that will determine how many buildings you have access to. If I only had access to one building, I could only run a report on that one building. If I have full rights, I could always select all schools and run district-wide reports. Over here on the left side, again, menus, attendance office, if I click on it, all the attendance office tools are listed here, including any canned reports, pre-built reports. And that's the structure of Infinite Campus, behavior office, health office, right? You also have the ability for any, within any screen, to click a little blue star up here, and that will start building your own personalized favorites menu. Also, you have elastic search. This allows you to search for any tool within the system or screen, as well as doing quick searches on students, just like you see there. Once we select a student, it's going to bring you to the last screen that you were on for that student, but for this example, let's go ahead and over to the profile page. Now, what I also want to point out is, Infinite Campus, no matter whether you're a parent, student, teacher, or admin user, the product is built utilizing responsive design. So if I go into maybe an iPad view like you see here, you'll notice the menu shifts over. There's no pinching and zooming, no scrolling left or right. Responsive design simply means it's mobile-friendly. So whether it's an iPad, or if we drop this down here to maybe an iPhone size, it's usable through all devices, and the screen's going to conform itself based off of the size of the device that you're utilizing. All right, so this is the profile page. So over here, if I click on student information, this is where I'm going to access any of the information you see listed here for one single student. So I clicked on profile, I'm in Dylan's profile page. This is going to show me things like in-progress grades or real-time academic information. How's the student doing semester term final grade? How's the student doing on competencies or standards-based, or standards that are being taught in that classroom? Over to the right here, attendance records, all color-coded, so I could easily see excused, unexcused, unknown, or exempt records for that student. Scroll down a little further, I've got behavior information, and a student to-do list, which is looking at the teacher's gradebook. So this is a great page for principals, APs, or counselors. I can take any screen for an individual student and just click, with a click of a button, get this in a nice clean PDF or report. These are called on-demand reports. So when you're in any student screen, you can get whatever's on the screen in a single report for that one student. All right, back to student information, one more screen that I want to talk about here is the ability to create custom screens. So this one here I built into my system through the front-end of the software. You don't have to be a super techie person to do these types of things. Any custom screen or field you add into the system is instantly reportable. I also have the ability to take any custom screen and make it available for viewing on the portal. I also have a digital repository built within Infinite Campus that gives you the ability to upload documents, scanned-in documents throughout the entire product. Building this custom screen, I decided to add a document repository as part of this custom screen. If I jump over to attendance office, a couple of screens here I want to talk about, daily attendance processing. So how many absences and tardies were there for today? And if I hover over any record in the system, you'll see full auditing, who entered that, date, timestamp. As an office attendance clerk, if a mistake was made, I can go into any of these records and make an adjustment or change for that one individual student. Also, let me go back to there for one second. If you remember in the past, if you sat in any of these demos, you have the ability of creating ad hoc filters. Ad hoc filters is part of the ad hoc reporting tools. Not only can they be exported to Excel spreadsheets, PDFs, Word documents, but they can be utilized throughout the system. So here, I'm looking at attendance, daily attendance for 2021 Harrison High School. But if I want to just filter out my ELL students, I select it there, and now I'm just filtering out that unique group of students. Ad hoc filters are always running in real time, they roll forward one year after the next. So you also have the ability as an admin to create an ad hoc filter and share them with other end-users as well. One more attendance tool here, classroom monitor, really nice tool. This allows you to monitor and see which teachers have submitted their classroom attendance for the day or not. The sections that you see in green have been submitted, the ones in pink have not. From here, if you wanted to, you can come to the communication area, go into the messaging tools, and message those teachers, and let them know that they did not submit their classroom attendance for the day. Other tools, components built into the Infinite Campus student information system are things like behavior office. So these are all your behavior office tools. Things like detention trackers, behavior referrals, behavior letters and messages. Same thing with attendance. It also has its own attendance letter builder and message builder as well. These letters can be built based off of certain criteria or rules, and the letters can also be built in multiple languages. What this means is when you print out that particular letter, it will print in the preferred language of the guardian or contact that's going to be receiving this particular letter. Same function.
Paul, I want to interrupt you. You have a little under five minutes for your segment left.
All right, thank you. Same tool lives within behavior as well. So there's a behavior letter. And the messenger tool works very similar, where you can create a message one time, save it as a template, so it can be reused. You're defining the criteria of who should receive these different messages here. And you have the ability to do things like embed Infinite Campus fields and sub-report, so it will personalize that message before sending it out, based off of who that recipient is. All the messenger tools have what's called a scheduler, so you can build your message one time, set it, automate it, and you can see this particular one here is running weekly. It will check the system every week. You, of course, will define your frequency, one time only, monthly, daily, hourly. So again, it's automating that message system and just makes life very easy. Not to go too deep into here, but a whole bunch of health office tools, so things like health office calendars. This is the tools your nurse would use. You've got three columns, students that were scheduled for the day, a student that perhaps won't, and a completed list of students. Again, the single database, I could see Connor was marked absent today in real time. That's telling me instantly, first thing in the morning, that this student's not going to be showing up for their scheduled health office visit. Couple of other things I want to show here, digital learning applications configuration. This is where, as an admin, you're going to set up all of your third-party digital learning partners of Infinite Campus. Anyone you see in this list, so let's go ahead and add a new connection here, we'll select Google Classroom. So Google Classroom is a digital learning partner of Infinite Campus as well. And simply, once I set that up like this, I'm ready to go. The connection simply then just has to be made from the Google Classroom side, and now your grades and assignments from Google Classroom passes right into the Infinite Campus gradebook, eliminating the need for your teachers having to duplicate, enter that information. Talk a little bit about scheduling. So let's go ahead to the student schedule page. You'll notice that the red line drops to where the student is sitting right now. Of course, it's after school, so 6 o'clock, the student does not have a class. But I do want to come into here and quickly talk a little bit about the walk-in scheduler. This is your scheduling tool you would use during the current school year to either do drop adds, or perhaps a student walks in with a blank schedule, I've got course requests that I can add right from this tool, or of course, course requests can be entered in from the portal as well, or teachers can make course recommendations. If I select any course request here, it's going to show me where I've got full classes and where I've got open seats, and I could just click into any box to roster that student into that particular section. I also have just a load function, and if I just click load, the scheduler will look at all of the different course rules and balance things out and create a schedule just like that for this particular student. The master schedule builder, this is where you're going to create your master schedule for the upcoming school year. You can build and load by department. I can build and load by the entire schedule as well. So if I just come up to here and go ahead and run a full build, I can also then run a full load, and this is in real time, about 10,000 course requests loading in. Those yellow sections, which are empty, will turn to white once this gets loaded with all those course requests. Any conflicts will be in red, you could hover over and see what those conflicts are. You have full control over color coding, different items. And of course, you can drop right onto the board, just like that, drag-and-drop functionality. And this is, again, our master schedule builder. You have the ability to roll forward your master schedule from the previous school year to the next, and you could save as many iterations of the master schedule as you wish. Sherry, how we doing on time?
We're running tight here, so we only have probably 14, 13 minutes left total.
Okay, let me jump over to the parent-student portal real quick. I'm going to log in as a parent. So this is the parent-student portal, the same portal that a parent or student would access. The biggest difference is, as a parent, I come in, I have access to all my kids with one single login. I have the ability to jump into a particular assignment that was created. I could see native Google Drive integration here, so the teacher embedded a file. As a resource for students, as a parent, I can view my student's submission and their work that they submitted back. Teachers, of course, would have the same view and be able to grade this particular file. Couple of other things here, then we'll turn it over to Sherry. Documents that need attention, these are those custom forms we talked about. So as a parent, I can come into here, the form is interactive, and also I've got that electronic signature capability. I can then submit this right back in. You could see that there's lots of information that I can view from here. If I had more time, I would go into more things, but obviously, grades can be viewed in real time, student schedules can be viewed, academic plan, that's your graduation plan that can be created for students, and documents would simply be any report you want to put out on the portal, such as personalized learning plans, schedules, report cards, transcripts, et cetera. All right, so that's going to end my portion of the presentation here. Let me jump back out to my deck here, and I'm going to turn it over to Sherry to talk a little bit about, and by the way, downloadable native mobile apps for parents and students as well. And Sherry, go ahead and take over for ongoing training and customer support.
Excellent. Thank you, Paul. If you wouldn't mind driving the slide presentation, my laptop is in the control room now, so I don't have it in front of me. I just want to talk to you about ongoing training and resources that you would have available as a district if you chose Infinite Campus as your solution. After working with a program manager on a timeline as to how your implementation would go, we have a series of subject expert trainers that you would work with based on everything you would need to learn and know, and there's a methodology put in place for it. And we also realized that everybody learns differently. The last year or so, we've kind of been challenged with having to do everything through Zoom meetings, phone calls, webexes, whatever, whatever platform you're comfortable with. Now that things are opening back up again, we do have onsite training, we have train-the-trainer hybrid training, we can offer that as well. We have manuals that get provided to districts, to all users. We also have some videos that we provide to that show you exactly how to use each facet of Infinite Campus. And we also have training sessions that are led by our channel partner, Custom Tech Software. Some of those can be in-person. Again, the last year and a half has been a little different than we typically do, so going forward, we anticipate kind of returning to normalcy. After every training session that you do, there is always a Q&amp;A session. We always want to make sure that a new district is brought up to speed, and they know exactly what they're getting into and how to use it. We also realize that you may have staff turnover during the course of a year or over the course of several years, and we work directly with you to make sure that you are where you need to be, and everyone at your school is at all levels. Our training resources that we offer, like I mentioned, we also give you a campus training site in the beginning. It's like a sandbox site that you're able to use sample data. You can't break anything, harm anything, but you get to actually have hands-on experience with it. There's also something we call the campus community, which is an online repository of information everyone in a district has access to. It's usually based on tool rights. So if you're a teacher, the information is pertinent to a teacher in the campus community. If you're a full-on administrative user, you pretty much have access to everything in the campus community that you could ever really need to ask questions about. There are also ways you can go in and blogs and information on state-specific information, user group meetings and the such, and so it's a very rich environment that we provide to you.
Barry, we have about seven minutes total.
Okay. What we do- What we do is, we've partnered up with Custom Tech Software as a local channel partner with Infinite Campus. They've been partnered for nearly three decades. And the implementation has been done by them with all of the districts that we have in the Northeast. Having localized support is great because when you have someone who is either training you or helping support you, these are the trainers, these are actual trainers that you would be working with. So each of them have a background in the educational sector in some capacity. We have information, we have trainers who specialize in scheduling. If you want to change a schedule, we have somebody who could work with you on that to make sure that you're getting what you need for your high schools or your middle schools, which vary, you know, as opposed to your elementary schools. We also have a special ed coordinator who we did a conference call with, with a smaller group of you. I know you're currently using special ed through Aspen. We have an individual, Colleen, right there, who works very closely with all of our districts who utilize our special ed module. And she would do the same for Fall River. The other thing I want to mention, too, is all districts that choose Infinite Campus and come into the family, as we like to call it, they embark on a client journey. And so after you've gone through the work with your project management and you're fully implemented and you're ready to go and you're using the product, we have a client success manager who is assigned specifically to you, who will then work with you throughout the course of this journey. They help organize user group meetings. And we have a really good, strong user group in the state of Massachusetts. We also do a Northeast user group meeting once a year as well. So what we do is, we like to have districts from all of the New England states come together, sharing information, different ways and methodologies that they're utilizing campus. The only difference there is the state reporting piece of it, of course, for each state, each district. What we do is, we also make sure we identify your district goals. So coming on, you're creating a whole new environment for your entire staff, your parents, your students. So we want you to get comfortable with Infinite Campus. But we also want to look forward to what your goals are. And we have some additional premium products designed specifically for Infinite Campus to work seamlessly. So we work with you to see if there's a way we could help you save money, save time, and also kind of grow with the product as well.
One minute total, Sherry, and we still have Caitlin to go.
Okay. So going into support, we offer localized support. Like I said, there is 24/7 coverage available. Typically, the hours of operation are 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. daily. You actually get a human on the phone. They answer it pretty quickly and they are all HDI certified. So they are knowledgeable in the product. You can submit a ticket through email through that campus community I mentioned, or you can give them a quick call. And the next slide just shows you what they look like and who they are. And they're a great group of people. And they're ready to work with all of you. So I know that was really fast, but we're on a timeline here. So what I'm going to do is pass this over to Caitlin Sanchez. And she's going to start talking about DESI state reporting. And she's going to give you a little run-through of how it works with Infinite Campus. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Sherry, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay. So my name's Caitlin Sanchez. I am a business support analyst. And one of my specialties is in state reporting. So I work very closely with the state of Massachusetts as well as Infinite Campus to make sure that we're up to date and following all the certifications and things like that. And so I plan to quickly go through, show you some of the fields in campus, some of the front-end tools that are available to you because that's where you'll live mostly in terms of troubleshooting and kind of cleaning up your data on the state side. We do still have some flat file extracts available in terms of data validation and troubleshooting, things like that. So I'll just quickly want to talk about, we have a lot of meetings per month. This is a month and a glance at what we do to make sure we stay on top of Massachusetts state reporting because it is unique in that it uses SIF, so it can get a little complex. So I personally meet with a team of support analysts as well as people over at Infinite Campus to make sure that we're aware of any issues that exist and we stay on top of all that. Then we meet weekly with the state as well. I'm pretty sure they meet with other vendors as well, but I know we meet with them every Wednesday to go over any questions we have about errors that might be stumping us, make sure we're getting data cleared or repulled as needed. So we meet with them and we have a very close relationship. I have their emails, I reach out to them all the time. And I have access to a ticket portal as well if I ever need to use it. Then we also meet bi-weekly with the districts as well as with our internal team. This allows the districts to be aware of any changes coming out from our end, either fixes or updates in terms of, you know, requirements from the state. We also have it kind of like an open forum where districts can collaborate and kind of build off one another in terms of questions they have or kind of setup issues they're running into. And what's unique about Massachusetts is that we typically would save the focus group for our seasoned clients where they have been with the product for a few years. But because SIF is so complex and it does require a lot of setup, we've opened it up to all districts in Massachusetts. It's new, old, large, small. So any district we have is on that call. So it does help with the collaboration there as well. Then we also have an individualized district meeting that we've kind of left open-ended for all districts to join in on if they have any questions or error lists they want to walk through with me. We've done that individual meeting as well. So I'm just going to jump into the product really quick just to give you kind of a quick show of what the tools are that exist for you. So there are SIF Publish Tool. This is how you can go in and actually publish specific objects to the state if you know you updated a bunch of records and you're not sure if it would trigger a new change to send or additional records to go over. You can actually go into this screen and select, publish select objects. Another thing that's related is this Record Updater. This allows you to, on a much smaller scale, if you know there's a couple of students or staff members whose records you want to resend, you can come into this tool and do that as well. So if, you know, you're a large district, using that Publish Tool may be a lot of objects at once. So you know you want to kind of narrow it down and get that processing time a lot faster. So you come in here and do the Record Updater. Same concept here, we have a Record Deleter. If you know there's a couple of records sent that you want to get rid of, you can come in here and depending on whether you're choosing a staff member or a student member, it will enable or disable some of the checkboxes here. And you can actually select which records or data objects you'd want to delete for that person or staff or student. Couple other things here in terms of troubleshooting. We have a Message Audit Tool that allows you to pull the records we've actually sent. So this tool allows you to actually pull out a student personal object and look and see what we're sending for that student. So these are kind of some of the troubleshooting tips, tools we have available on the front end.
You've got about two minutes, Caitlin.
Okay. So all this being said, you do have a lot of documentation on it. So kind of what Sherry touched upon, we do have community documentation that exists for all this stuff. So, you know, obviously, once you're getting your feet wet and getting in there, this will be extremely helpful for you. It is for me, I have, you know, I've gone to this Objects and Elements area multiple times a day to kind of go through, okay, what am I looking at in terms of what triggers an event to send? What is my reporting population look like? And where do my different data elements pull from within Infinite Campus? And it gives you those breadcrumbs to show you exactly where in the system that actually lives. So if you're wondering why something's not sending or why it's sending blank or incorrectly, this is where you would want to go and navigate to. We also have the, we still fully support the flat file extracts. So you can, at this point, for number one, you can submit via flat file. You'd have to make a special request, obviously, you don't want that. But we still support it in case that safety net is needed. So they're also very helpful for your data validation. So if you kind of want to pull and see the population of students that are going to pull in your SIMS extract, you can pull the flat file here and take a look at that and compare with what you have in Infinite Campus to make sure it all matches up.
Forty seconds, Caitlin.
All right. So should I just wrap up here, I guess? All right. So that's some of the documentation we have that you'll probably end up, you know, using once you're in the product and all that. Aside from that, you can, we have the ticketing system that you can put tickets in to request, you know, that you get things repulled. Any questions you have on errors that you see in the portal, we actually get a login for that portal to see your errors as well. So we can start taking a look at those before you even put a ticket in. So we try to keep that proactive approach since SIF can be pretty overwhelming as a new district as well. So that's, in a nutshell, what I have in terms of state reporting. I'm sure if there's anything I didn't cover or go over, we can talk about that in the Q&amp;A session. So Paul, if you want to take back over.
Sure.
I know, I know you lapsed about the timing. But we did a demo with Worcester and we were very spot on to the second.
You're right on the button right now. You're right on the button right now.
That's why we're very cognizant of everyone's time, so.
We appreciate your cooperation. That's great. So we have 15 more minutes for questions. Is that okay with you guys?
Yeah, that's absolutely perfect.
All right, so six, four, seven. Does anybody have any questions? I have two quick ones, I'll ask right away.
Okay.
Is this multilingual? Can you flip to Spanish, Camilla?
Yes, you can.
For all student reports and anything further.
Yes, you can.
And how many districts do you have in Massachusetts?
Right now, we have 13, including, we just started bringing Worcester on. They're our 13th district.
Worcester's going with you guys right now?
Yep.
Anything further for Infinite Campus, Ms. Larrabee?
Hi, thank you for your presentation. Just one question for now. Does everything, the e-signature, all functionalities, functionalities, like the web-based program, work on the app?
They do, yep. It's responsive design. So no matter what kind of device, what kind of tablet, phone, Chromebook, computer, laptop, it doesn't matter, it's all the same.
So you can actually go to the App Store and download?
Yeah, the parent and student apps are downloadable from the app or the Google Play Store. Everything else is, you have an Infinite Campus website for the district. And then everyone logs in, you go to the same URL, but it's Tool Rights. So as a teacher, you'll log in and your district decides what your Tool Rights would be. If you're an administrator, if you're a technical administrator, that's decided by the district, but it's all the same.
Okay, one more question, quick question. I think you called it a user group manager, somebody that would be in charge if something happened.
A client success manager, yes.
Okay, is it one per district? Like, would we have our only person or is it shared amongst districts?
We have a team and they're assigned, they're usually assigned by region. So we have someone who works with the state of Massachusetts. That would be your go-to person for, her name is Stephanie Riss. She's been with us for a very long time. And she works with all of our Massachusetts districts. And she has a lot of experience with the larger districts as well.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Costa.
Thank you and thank you for the presentation.
You're welcome.
One of the things that jumped out in, you know, obviously, I don't use our current system, so ours may do it. But what I thought was important is that, if I'm not mistaken, when entering daily attendance, if it's not in there, can send reminders to the classroom teacher to enter it?
Yes, you can.
Will it also allow the district to set parameters so that if a student is absent in excess, that gets flagged for either a classroom teacher, administrator, school adjustment counselor? Somebody could see that as the attendance being entered, that if it hits a certain threshold, that that gets flagged? That information gets spotlighted somehow?
Absolutely.
So it'll disaggregate in the building as well as the district so that we'll have flags, if you will, I guess, or some notifications or ticklers that say you have X amount of students who are in danger of exceeding the district's policy with attendance, et cetera?
Yep, absolutely. So Paul touched.
That's correct. Sure. So with the messaging system, you can create messages that you set different rules and criteria. And then you could even set that and tie that message template to what I was talking about earlier, filters. Those filters, which are, think of them as kind of advanced searches that can be saved that are always looking in the system in real time, could be designed around students, courses, or staff. And they can then receive those messages, not only, let's say, as an email, but, you know, I'm kind of a visual person, so I'll just show you real quickly here. When I first log in, it takes me to my message center. These are all kind of personal alerts, messages that I might receive as an end user. And this is one of the areas that you can have those messages. And a new message would have a little new flag right here. In addition to that, any student, if I just go to any screen for a student, there are flags, custom flags, that you can define right up top here that would have, that would show up on a particular condition, start date or end date these flags. You can create as many custom flags as you want, as well as the little warning that pops up when you hover over that particular flag.
Well, I think what you're also talking about, too, is what you do is you would have a filter and an ad hoc running daily. So what you would do is you would set the threshold. And it would look for students that maybe, once they hit seven days of absences, then you can churn up a message or a phone call or a text message through Messenger with Voice. So someone in any office, and you can set different parameters for each of your buildings even, or grade levels, you can get down to that granular level and then a report would run. So it's always running in the background. Infinite Campus is always in real time. So as long as the attendance is put in, either by a teacher or a front office staff member, and it's valid, there's always something in the background that will alert you. And then you can also run a report that will tell you which teachers haven't taken attendance. So you can set reminders up to help guide them along that they need to kind of get on that.
And just one other quick question. In terms on the nursing side or medical side, student profile, medications they're on, allergies, et cetera, et cetera. If the nurse is in receipt of those prescriptions, so in the event something were to happen, teacher will have, if they are granted access, will have that information?
That's correct. Again, that's a Tool Rights issue. So depending on what you want your teachers to be able to see and view, that could be sensitive information that maybe the nurse should only see, but they would be able to update that. And again, that's a district-defined decision on that.
Thank you, Ayeel. Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yep. And just to add one little note on that, I logged in as a teacher. As you mentioned, the teachers, this is the teacher's portal. Health condition flags are right here. So with the button, I could see all the different health conditions that the nurses allow to be seen.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Corey? Thanks a lot for the presentation.
Oh, you're welcome.
We've had the other system for quite a while. Could you just tell me, what districts in Massachusetts have this system?
We have Weston, Brockton, Whitman-Hanson, Methuen, Medway, Penticott, King Philip, Worcester.
Basically, what's been the feedback from all of those districts?
I mean, I believe, I think, this is before my time even. Whitman-Hanson is the very first one. And I think they came on in the early 2000s. And they were our very first Infinite Campus district. And we work very closely with them. Our client success team is in constant communication with them on a regular basis. We get a lot of feedback. We believe everybody is very happy in Massachusetts with our product. Like I said, we have that user group, we have the client success manager. Communication is key. And we also offer, our product has enhancements that come out every four weeks. And that tends to come from feedback from districts. If they're looking for something in addition to or they would like something changed, altered, modified, improved, Infinite Campus listens. So I can honestly and genuinely say that our districts here, you know, all the ones I've supported and brought in, everybody is very happy. And again, with our state reporting, we've worked very hard, this whole SIF mandate over the last however many years it's been going on. We work very closely, not only with our districts, with DESI, with Infinite Campus, the state. Everybody is really on board with making sure our districts are where they need to be.
Appreciate that, very much.
Sure. And I can also, I mean, I've offered this to Brian, too, and you and Tracy, if you need references. You're welcome to call any one of them and I can provide a list. I know, you know, let me know and I can forward that on. Also, too, I know, we did a really quick run-through here. We had done several other demos with recordings. And I believe those were shared with Brian. So if you still have those, they're still out there. That includes the health office, I believe, the teacher portal. And there were a couple other, the special ed one we did as well. So that would be good to reference back. And then the information I gave you gives you a little bit about the SIS, the core product itself, and some of the premium products that are, again, built for it. It's just, it's an additional license, you know, turn on the switch and it works for you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anything further for Infinite Campus? Well, we really appreciate you. Oh, go ahead.
No, oh, okay.
Quick question. On your website, you have under the score pass-back feature that soon assessment scores on standardized tests will be available in real time. What standardized tests are they required to have?
Well, with Infinite Campus, you're able to import anything, any kind of standardized test. We, you know, obviously, you guys are reporting with MCAS. You could do SAT, ACT. You can bring in your AP scores through College Board. You can put them anywhere within a customized field. With the score pass-back, I don't know. I think Paul is, are you going to that site?
I was going to show an example of an imported score. So these are the MCAS assessment results that we import into Infinite Campus. Once it's in the system, whether it be imported automatically in from a digital learning partner like a illuminate DNA, it works very similar to, as I explained, Google Classroom. These OneRoster certified third-party systems, assessment systems and LMS systems, automatically have that sync back and forth between both systems. So regardless of whether those scores come in from a digital learning partner, which is real-time, or whether it's a manual import using our assessment import tool, once you have the records in there, you can do things like this and get bar charts, pie charts, and analytics around those scores.
And on that website too, there is an area that shows who our digital learning partners are through that API, OneRoster. So again, like Paul said, that's live, that's real-time. So any other data that you want to bring in, such as the ones I mentioned, that would be an upload, but it would always be there. And those would carry over with the student. You wouldn't lose that data year to year.
So they would be responsible for pulling in MCAS data? Would it be something that was directly from the asset?
Well, what happens is, I know with DESI, with MCAS, they provide a file and I believe it's something like two hundred and fifty some odd columns of information. I'm going to use Methuen as an example because they have a good number of students and they do it very well. I know that they use certain bits of information. They don't take everything in. They create what they need and what they want to use from that reporting. And then I know that they also have an MCAS area under each student that they're able to retrieve. Call anything in a, in a field in Infinite Campus is then reportable. So as long as you have the rights to see that data and that information, you would be able to retrieve it. But it's very easy. There's an import tool with an Infinite Campus for that. And that's something, again, our project manager and our trainers would help work with you on. You're welcome.
Anything further? Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much, everyone. It was a pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
I appreciate your time and I look forward to hearing back from you.
Okay, so next up is Power School. This is going to be a half an hour presentation and then about fifteen minutes for questions. So it's seven oh one. Power School, please introduce yourself and you're off and running.
Fantastic. Good evening, everyone. My name's Danny Davis and I'm the account manager for Power School for all of our districts in Massachusetts that are above three thousand students. Truly appreciate your time. I know that we don't have a ton of time today, so with the thirty minutes that we do have, we wanted to start things off with introductions, share a little bit about ourselves, but then dive specifically into the functionality and items that you all had requested. So having said that, in terms of starting off with introductions, as I mentioned, my name is Danny Davis. I am the account manager for Power School. I've been with Power School for six years. Really excited to be here with you all today. Prior to being with Power School, I was actually an elementary school teacher at a very small district in Kansas City, Missouri. Taught fifth and sixth grade science, if anyone has any background in that, fantastic. Having said that, I'm going to go ahead and pass it to my colleague, JP.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks so much for the opportunity today. My name is John Paul Rameen, or JP, as you'll often hear me called, and feel free to call me. I'm a regional vice president of sales here at Power School, responsible for the eastern United States and Canada. Been at Power School for a little over fourteen years and have worked very closely with our Massachusetts clients in the past.
All right. And hi, everybody. I'm Julie Wiestman. I'm one of the senior solution engineers over here at Power School. Much like Danny, I've been with the company for six years, working with K-12 schools for the past eight to ten years. So really excited to be here with you all today as well.
Fantastic. So as I mentioned earlier, the first thing that I wanted to do before we spend the majority of the time really talking about what you all told us was important to you, was share a little bit about us that we thought may be critical for you all to know as you kind of think about the decision that you have that is upcoming. The first thing that I think is important to mention is that while Power School is primarily known as a student information system, we're really a lot more than that too. The first thing that I think is kind of critical to keep in mind though, is that we are a K through twelve software company. And the reason why that's important is that is the clear and only focus in exactly what it is that we do. Having said that, we're very much an innovative company that's growing. So over just the past six years that I've been a part of Power School, we've expanded. And the reason why we've expanded is because what's critical to us is to make sure that no matter what part of the district that you are serving, that we are engaging you and making your life easier. So for example, you all use Unified Talent applicant tracking to hire your teachers. That's part of what's been added to the Power School platform. The most recent acquisition that we've made is Naviance. That is what your guidance team is using for college and career readiness. And the reason why we're acquiring these or developing these products is really to make the barriers that potentially existed between softwares disappear to really gain efficiencies for your staff members and give that time back to you all. So having said that, when you think about what Power School is, yes, we're a student information system that is primarily used throughout the United States and Canada. We work with over thirty-seven million students on just our hosted platform and sixty-one percent of the students, K through twelve, throughout US and, throughout the US and Canada. I think the real reason why I bring that up, I, I don't mean to brag or anything like that, but I think the reason why it's important is because we have an obligation to get what we are doing right, from two perspectives. One, from a functionality perspective, to make sure that we are serving the population well, but another reason is from a data and security privacy standpoint. Now, when you think about Fall River, you guys are approximately around ten thousand students. We work with about six hundred school districts nationwide that are approximately two thousand students or, or ten thousand students or more. And we work with a hundred and fifty school districts in the state of Massachusetts. When we think about the work that we're doing in Massachusetts, and the reason why I think this is important is because we very much have a thriving community that we would love for you all to be a part of. We call it the P-SU group. And that P-SU group has over two hundred active members. And as part of that membership, there's basically two things that they're doing on a very regular basis. The first one is they have a best practices meeting every single month. That's actually customer-led. And the second thing that they participate in is our state reporting session. Again, that's something that we do monthly and we'll talk in about, in just a moment, a little more detail about that. It's also group messaging. I mentioned this to Brian, who I know is kind of your primary SIS coordinator, but on a daily basis, people are communicating and they're talking about potential challenges that they're experiencing at their district, particularly when COVID hit, and how they can go about using our software to help solve those problems. They share things like plugins, they share forums, they do webinars together. We have a newsletter that goes out monthly that's specific to Massachusetts, really to support our, our customers. Last two things that I'll mention as a part of our work that we're doing in Massachusetts is we do have a regional trainer. Her name is Marsha Pereira. She came from Grafton, that is located here in Massachusetts. And we are also fully SIF certified. So what it means to be SIF certified is that we are meeting regularly with DESI to make sure that we are in constant compliance. And the reason why that's important is because we want to make sure that you absolutely get the most funding per pupil that you all deserve. So there's a couple of things that go with that. We do have a compliance team with a specific product specialist that is dedicated purely to state reporting. So not only do we want to make sure that you absolutely get the most funding that you deserve as a district, but we also want to make sure that it's as easy as possible for your staff to do that state reporting, which can sometimes be a huge burden and take a lot of time. So one of the first things that you asked us to present on was just core SIS functionality. And over the past, I guess it's really been about eight, nine months now, we've been meeting with your team regularly to try and get a better understanding as to what that really meant to you all. What did your specific departments need to better serve the students of Fall River? So as you can see, we had an initial discovery call or conversation in November. We've had demonstrations almost every single month since, trying to get a sense of exactly what it is that your staff wanted or needed to achieve their, to achieve their goals. Excuse me. And we heard some themes. So I took a couple lists from the most recent demonstrations we've had with the departments that you identified as your key stakeholders, parent information, health, special education, the guidance team, tech integration, and heard a few things. I've listed them here, but I think it really comes down to four key themes. One, you wanted something that was easier to use. And that meant for everyone involved, parents, students, the different departments, anyone that was going to touch your student information system, you wanted them to have a very positive experience. On top of that, the different departments wanted access to data and analytics. They wanted dashboards that were pertinent to their roles. They wanted access to historical data that they didn't necessarily have to dig through. In addition to that, we also heard two key themes, and I think this is really, really critical, that you absolutely valued a vendor who would support you, but also be a partner. And then the last theme, I think I really heard from everyone involved, was that you wanted a product that was going to continue to grow with you all, because your district's constantly changing, education is constantly changing, and you wanted to make sure that we were going to meet those needs. So I know this is probably a little difficult to see, particularly for the people that are in the back of the room, but when it comes to the features and functionalities of our SIS, we do a lot of different things. But again, it really comes back to those core themes that you shared with us. Making things easier to use, providing access to actionable data, support and partnership, and innovation. So I'll point out a couple examples of these and then we're going to dive into the specific features that you all identified as being critical. But for example, when we think of ease of use, we have a mobile app. That mobile app is used by many parents and students across the nation, but particularly here in Massachusetts. And that whole idea is to make it easier to access exactly what it is that they need, access their grades, see communication from their teachers, et cetera. Another example, action, access to actionable data and analytics. We have several reporting options throughout all of our various platforms to give you exactly what you need, one click away. When it comes to support and partnership, we absolutely care about integrating with other vendors. Obviously, we do a lot of things, and I mentioned before, the reason why we're adding in different products or developing those is because we want to break down those barriers, but we understand we're not going to be your only vendor as a school district. And that's totally okay. We still want to make sure our platform's going to work with your other vendors so that those barriers still won't exist. We'll talk about one of those examples later, which I believe is School Messenger. And I think the last thing I want to highlight is just innovation. We've added two new pieces here that I think would be critical to your district. The first one is digital forms. So the ability to take any piece of paper that's floating throughout the district or the building today, digitize it, deliver it to parents, have them sign off on it if they need to, and have it automatically electronically routed back to the school district. And another example of just another new feature that we recently rolled out is just asset and textbook tracking. So again, we're continuing to invest in our own products. So having said that, what I'm going to do now is I'm going to transition this to Julie. And as a part of that, she's going to highlight some of the key functionality that's related to parent-student communication.
All right. So with that being said, one of the things that Danny had talked about a little bit earlier was the fact that we do want to make sure that our parents have an easier time using the system itself. And so when we are talking about this, when we're thinking of our new parents coming into the district, the first thing that we want to go ahead and do is capture all that new student data. And what better way to do this than through online registration or enrollment? So as a parent, if I am brand-new into Fall River, I'm going to be able to go ahead and actually access those online registration forms, regardless of the device that I'm using. So if I'm on my phone, if I'm on an iPad or other tablet device, if I'm on a, a computer or Chromebook, I'm still going to be able to go ahead and complete everything that the district wants and needs of me. Now, if my student is going to Morton, or if my student is going to Talbot, it's going to go ahead and potentially show me different information. I'll have different agreements potentially. And really, the idea here is that we are making it easier for our families to go ahead and really just complete everything that the district wants and needs. Danny talked about maximizing funding. This is a really great way for us to be able to go ahead and do that. Now, as a parent, certainly if I am not an English speaker, right? Being able to go ahead and see that registration documentation in my language, making it easy again for me to be able to go ahead, complete this process all online, and of course, submit it back to the district or to that school. Some of the other pieces that I do want to make mention of is certainly when we're talking about returning families to our district year over year, getting that information updated, making sure that all of those agreements are signed off on. This is going to go ahead and pre-populate information for our parents, again, making it easier for them to go ahead and ensure that everything that, that the district and school has in file for my student is up to date, is accurate. And the other side of this is if I've got multiple students at the district, right? I've got a couple of kiddos who are in different grade levels, maybe at different schools. Well, this is going to allow me to go through, make my changes to my basic demographic detail, and just simply roll that data forward from student to student. Again, making my life easier as a parent, but of course, making sure that the school and district are getting that consistent data across your families. Now, Danny had mentioned the idea of our parents being able to go ahead and not only complete that once-a-year process through enrollment or registration, but any of those other forms that you as Fall River have kind of floating around there, this is going to be a really great way for our parents to complete this information online. So something that we can all potentially relate to is scheduling parent-teacher conferences. As a parent, I've got a busy life. As a teacher, teachers have, of course, busy lives. This just helps to simplify it for me as a parent. So that way, right through my Power School parent portal, I'm able to go ahead and register for a time that makes sense with my schedule, as well as based upon what the teacher has available. And at the same time, we're thinking about, you know, us as parents, what it is that we might have to do on a fairly regular basis, something like a permission slip. It seems very simple, but I know at times when I was a kid, my parents forgot to either sign something, I, of course, forgot that piece of paper at home, well, I wasn't able to participate in sledding or whatever the activity might have been. This really just takes it, moves it online, making it very simple and easy again for our parents to complete this process and ensure that it's routed to the right person internally. Now, Danny had talked a little bit about that mobile app, right? We want to make it easy for our parents to be able to see and understand what's going on in their student's education. So as a parent, when I have access to my mobile app, I can go ahead and understand what's going on in that student's class or classes. Of course, I can see all of my students through one login. And at the same time, if I wanted to see what's late, missing, or incomplete on the student's assignments, it makes it really easy for me to quickly pull that information up. Now, for my kiddo, if they're failing a class potentially, or if they're doing really well, I can dive in a bit deeper to get an understanding in this case of how my student is getting a D minus in their Algebra II class. And at the same time, if I wanted to look at a particular piece of feedback, a particular assignment, again, all of that information is available to me right at my fingertips within here as that parent. Now, Danny had also talked a little bit earlier about the ability to take these forms, digitize them, send them out to our parents, get those electronic signatures. We saw how the online form collection solution would be able to go ahead and do that for anything our parents need to maybe fill out. But sometimes we want to send out things like progress reports or report cards, transcripts, assessment results, state assessment, test data, whatever the case might be. This is really a great way for me as a parent, again, to receive those types of communications electronically, making it easier, making sure that I'm engaged in understanding what's going on in my student's academic career, while again, on the district's side, just making it very simple and easy for us to go ahead and reach our parents where they're at. And then, of course, within here, when we are thinking about this information, Danny talked about the idea of those third-party solutions that your district might be using or that your schools might be using. At Power School, Danny mentioned the idea that we, of course, provide quite a few different solutions within our Power School ecosystem, but there are going to be vendors out there that you're going to want to or need to work with. One great example within here is School Messenger. So they use the Power School API in order to push and pull data. We talked in the very beginning about how our parents are going to be able to go ahead and complete that online registration or that information update every single year. Well, for School Messenger, as soon as that information is up- Well, for School Messenger, as soon as that information is updated on those student records, this is going to go ahead and just pull the most up-to-date information. So as a parent, if my phone number changes, once I make that change or that update, as a district, I don't have to worry that I'm contacting them on an old, you know, an old cellphone, or sending out a text message or an email to something that doesn't exist anymore. This, again, just allows for us to have that great integration with these other third-party vendors, and just ensuring that as a district and as a school, we're able to go ahead, engage in our community, and of course, reach our parents where they're at. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to John Paul in order to talk about the implementation, training, as well as support within Power School.
Thank you, Julie. And good evening again, school committee members. Danny mentioned in his introduction that one of the themes that we heard, engaging with the district team, is how critically important support and partnership was. And so we wanted to make sure that we carved out some specific time to guide you through exactly what a Power School implementation with Fidelity looks like, to spend some time on what not only initial, but ongoing professional development looks like. And then last but not least, our commitment to ensuring that you have a world-class customer support experience. We'll talk about that in some detail towards the end. Actually, I have commitment from the company to go above and beyond in that regard, to ensure that the needs of Fall River are met. So if we start with the implementation idea, what does a successful implementation of Power School with Fidelity looks like? The good news is, is that while I won't pretend for anyone in the room that it doesn't involve a lot of hard work, because it does, we have an extremely well-defined process for implementation. We have literally migrated thousands of customers from dozens of different systems in the past. So we know that the methodology we've built over the past 20 years works, and it works well. At a high level, essentially, the first thing we do in any good implementation is learn more about you. We collect information from you about how you do things today in Fall River. How do you grade students? How do you take attendance for them? How do you handle discipline at a building level or at a district level? And then your dedicated Power School project manager works together with your district team to configure Power School software settings at both a district level and a building level, so they reflect your practices and policies. It's very important to us that our platform adapts to how you do things, rather than you trying to adapt to how it does things. And so that initial discovery phase in your implementation is really critical to that process. Once we've worked together to configure Power School, the next step in the process is migrating data from your legacy system into the Power School platform. Our project manager collaborates with your district team to assist with extracting the data from your current system, formatting it into an import template in Power School, and then importing the data. This was, or has been in particular, a topic of great interest to the Fall River team, so we collaborated closely with our services team to ensure we have a migration plan that would support migrating all of your historical data from your current system into the Power School platform. Once data migration has taken place, the last step in the process is configuring security. Power School gives you the ability to decide for every employee of Fall River Public Schools what they have read and write access to, what they have read-only access to, and what they have no access at all to. So we'll work with the district leadership team to determine what those access criteria are, and configure the software to reflect that. At the end of implementation, our focus shifts to training. And then ultimately, once we've trained you, our focus will shift to support. So I'd like to dig into both of those topics in a little more detail, as both the training phase and what happens after we've implemented you are critically important. You will find this sentiment pretty much anywhere you go. I just happened to pick a study from the Horizon Report. But the notion that to make the most of your ed tech investments, teachers need ongoing professional development to learn how to use and integrate technology, that's a big focus and priority for us as a partner, is to make sure that not only you get the training you need to launch, but that we have a variety of different ways to meet your ongoing professional development needs. If we break them into kind of four pillars, we think for our platform, those pillars are having a baseline of online scalable learning opportunities for everybody, that we have differentiated training opportunities, so a complete curriculum of opportunities, both at an introductory level and an advanced level. We need to meet your learners where they are, your adult learners specifically, whether it's online or right here in Fall River. And we need to provide opportunities for your employees to collaborate with their peers. There is so much Power School customers learn from each other that we know it's important for us to support opportunities for them to interact with each other. So if we dig into each of those things just a little bit, that foundational piece, scalable online training, is what we refer to as our Professional Development Plus subscription. This is a complete suite of over 60 full-length, one-hour courses. These were designed and developed by a PhD in online education who focused their master's thesis on how adult learners specifically learn. I think most of us with experience with adult learners know that they learn a lot differently, and actually can be a lot more challenging than our adolescent learners, so we put a lot of thought into how we developed our online courses for adult learners specifically. This is complemented by a complete library of two-to-three-minute quick how-to tutorials we call Mastery in Minutes. The beauty of this foundational piece is that it's all-you-can-eat, completely unlimited. You can assign it to every single employee in Fall River. They can refer back to it as many times as they want. And it's a built-in onboarding strategy for new employees to the district, whether they're teachers, principals, what have you. This is all assigned out of a learning management system environment, so you can monitor who's completing the work, who's not completing the work, and when they've completed it. So we build upon that foundation by offering a complete curricula of courses. So not only do we have the initial courses that we need, but we have highly specialized courses around complex tasks, like student scheduling, like report creation, or even things like customizing your instance of the Power School student information system to meet your district's own specific needs. We'll make sure that we provide not only for the new, but for the advanced as well. We offer training how and when you need it. We have a team of trainers, like Danny referenced, his local is just up the road in Grafton, who can come to you when you need it. We also have the ability to train you online in a Zoom setting over as little a half-day to multiple days, however, that needs to be met. And then last but not least, we have Power School University. Power School University is a professional development conference. We typically offer it in four locations per year, Florida in February, which is usually a tough sell for folks from New England, but also in the east, central, and west typically. We had it in Boston a couple years ago, likely have it in Boston again within the next year or two. So the power of PSU is not just having access to so much expertise in one place, though that certainly is powerful, it's that ability to network. We typically get over 2,000 people from across the globe who attend PSU. So last but not least, I want to talk a little bit about support, and I mentioned the notion of us wanting to go above and beyond a little bit for Fall River here. One thing that you should know about Power School is we take your customer experience very seriously, and we're recognized as an industry leader in the space. These four screenshots are awards that we've won over the last year and a half for excellence in customer service, in customer experience innovation, and in the online support portal, the Power School community that we provide our customers. That community portal is really kind of the foundational starting point, where a district staff can interact with the user community, with a deep knowledge base of articles, with discussion forums, or even start a chat session with a Power School representative online. We offer support coverage from 6:00 AM to 12:00 midnight, Monday through Friday Eastern Standard Time, as well as 11:00 to 8:00 on Saturday, to ensure that you have help available whenever you need it. We also, of course, offer 24/7/365 support for any availability issues with the platform. Now, one thing we wanted to do to go above and beyond for Fall River is ensure that the Fall River team has access to a special part of our support organization called Strategic Support at no additional cost. So our Strategic Support team is a team of senior Power School support engineers that focus only on key accounts and multiproduct deployments across the United States. So along with Springfield Public Schools, you would actually be the only other customer in Massachusetts currently accessing and working with this team. You have a dedicated, unique phone number and email alias that routes directly to that team, bypassing the tier-one support organization in the company. And that really does a couple of things for you. It helps us speed up the diagnosis of any issue that you might have, and it helps us bring that issue to resolution, because we've kind of gone straight to the experts. The other thing that you will have, that all Power School customers have, is a client success manager. Her name is Kristin Corcoran. And what she, what her purpose of her role is, is to be kind of your liaison to the company, to ensure that you have a single point of contact for anything related to renewal, the customer satisfaction, some of the things they will do with you, is meet with you on a quarterly basis, to review things like your support case history, the results of customer satisfaction surveys we regularly distribute to the district team to make sure that we're on track, and provide you with roadmap updates on where we're heading directionally with the product. So hopefully, that helped give you a sense of what implementation, training, and support would look like. I'm going to hand the floor back to Danny to wrap this up.
Yeah, that'll work. So I guess in conclusion, again, thank you all for your time. We truly appreciate you inviting us in here. And I just want to rehash again, if you do choose to partner with us, exactly what you'll be getting. I think the first thing that I wanted to make sure that we emphasize is, again, you're going to get the core SIS functionality that your district needs. We're very confident in our ability to deliver on that, and that's because of the amount of time that your staff has put in with us to evaluate our software. Second key thing, too, when it comes to state reporting, we're absolutely an expert. Please confirm that with Desi if you have any concerns about that whatsoever, so you will absolutely get 100% of the funding that you deserve. We're going to enhance your communications with your community, your parents, your families, to really make sure that they have a positive experience. We're going to continue to innovate with you, and you're going to absolutely get the best that Power School has to offer when it comes to support. So I know we're right at time, 7:30 on the dot, and I wanted to make sure that we did save time for your questions, because that means the absolute world to us. So I guess then we will open it up for the Q&amp;A portion for the next 15 minutes.
Well, thank you very much for the presentation. Any questions? Any questions for Power School? Mr. Hart?
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Thank you for coming. I've heard, you know, all three vendors tonight, and it seems to me, when you, you know, make the sale, what happens after is the most important part, the customer service, the communication, you know, with you guys, with the district, with the teachers, with the IT people, tech people. So I guess my question is, what sets you guys apart from the other two that we've heard from here tonight? As far as, you know, the customer service, communication?
Yeah, I'm happy to. So it is a really fantastic question, because I think you're exactly right. We can come in here as salespeople, we can tell you that, but we absolutely have to walk the walk. So that's the reason why I would encourage you to reach out to the other 150 districts that we partner with, to make sure that you're asking about their experience. Having said that, I don't know exactly what Aspen or what Infinite Campus is offering you, but I guess I'll just reiterate again that we will be offering you all strategic support, which is something that we do not necessarily offer to every district. And then on top of that, your client success manager. I think that's a really critical person, as you think about the success of your district, someone that's going to be meeting with you at least quarterly. Quite frankly, Kristin meets with districts as often as they would like to talk. But to make sure that you're up to date on exactly what features we're rolling out, so that you can leverage those type of things as soon as possible. I think sometimes what gets lost when you do purchase a software is that you don't always realize all of the new things that are being added to it, and that's one of the reasons why we want to make sure you're always caught up to speed, so your district's getting the most out of what you're paying for.
And as far as, you know, another key thing that I look at is retention, right? So how is your company, Power School, retain, do you retain your clients that you get? And what's the record on that?
Yeah, go ahead and speak to Andrew.
Yeah, so it's a great question. We have a 98% retention rate. I think, to elaborate on what Danny was saying, I think another reason, one thing that makes us very different from other companies right now is our growth vector. Because we have grown from a company of 500 people to about 3,000 people over the last six years, one of the things that we have to do strategically to sustain that growth is make sure we have happy customers. So we have a dedicated protocol, that's where that client success manager comes in really important. We want to be taking temperature checks of our customers' health at all times, so we can continue to grow. There is a metric used in the software industry called Net Promoter Score, which is a way that we use that and measure it internally. It'd be one of those things that your customer success manager reviews with you specifically every quarter to make sure, are we on the right track, or are we on the wrong track? Hopefully, that helped, but I think one of the things, because our growth vector is different than most of the competition, it's absolutely critical to us that our current customers are happy, so they say good things, so we can have more new customers.
All right. Well, thank you very much once again for coming. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Man. I yield.
Mr. Corcoran? Just a brief question. First of all, I want to thank you all very much. It was a great presentation. Could you just give me an example of just a few school districts in Massachusetts that are using the system?
Sure. So Springfield would be our largest.
Springfield?
Springfield would be one. We have Needham, we have Shrewsbury, Waukesha. As Danny said, there are over 150 school districts in Massachusetts using it. Those are just a few that popped to the top of mind.
Thanks, that's good. I just need to have just a few. I yield.
I think the other thing that is worth knowing is that we have customers as small as 100 kids and customers as big as 26,000 kids in Springfield. So it's easy enough to use, to scale down to the needs of small customers, but robust enough to serve the needs of much larger ones.
Thank you very much.
Are all your forms automatically translated to the native language of the students? So how does that work?
Sorry if I keep asking.
So that's a really great question. With that registration or online enrollment solution, it is something where it's an actual localized translation. So the district would provide us with both the English version of their registration forms, but then also the forms that they have already translated. So in other words, it's not us taking a guess or a stab at what is it that Fall River wants to ask of parents in that particular language. Instead, it's Fall River saying, this is exactly what we want to go ahead and ask. So that way, when our team is going through and building out the solution for you, not only would we be building out that English version, but in my example, also building out that Spanish version, again, allowing that parent to easily translate the form itself.
Well, that makes it a lot easier. And how long have you been in Springfield?
Since 2008.
And they're happy with you?
Yes.
That helps. Anything further for Power School? Any questions? I guess, I guess that wraps up Power School's presentation. We really appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
That was great. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Have a great evening. There we go. There we go.
Do we have any new business to come before the committee tonight? Have you crossed from the business? Hearing none. I'm trying to wait for Ms. Larrabee to join us. Do we have a request for exec?
I'm sorry, Ms. Agnew. Related to the presentations, just in general. We talked a lot about, they talked about the grades being simultaneous, you know, for parents to be able to see. What is the current contract for when teachers are required to put stuff in? So it's only, the data's only going to be as fresh as whoever enters it. Is there a problem with, what is the current status of that in the district?
We have the parent portal. I think the goal is to do it, I think the contract says within two weeks, right? The contract says that they have to enter within two weeks. I will say that some people are very good about that, and then some people we have to remind.
Yeah. No, I was just curious. I mean, districts are different, and obviously, if it's, two weeks isn't that long a time, and I'm sure there's plenty of teachers that do it sort of right on the spot. But if it's a lag too much, it's going to be a waste of the functionality of any of those programs.
I think we see that a lot. At the end of the term, if someone hasn't kept their grades up, parents panic, they see zero straight through, and then at the end, then they see all the grades being populated. So that is an issue at times.
Yeah. Thank you. I yield.
We have a request for executive session.
There would be a need for it, Mr. Chair. If you like, I could read at least one of the items.
That's fine. Go ahead.
National Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A2. To conduct strategy session in preparation for negotiation with non-union personnel, specifically, the new principal of the CUSM Middle School to be appointed by the superintendent of schools. And we would need a vote to go into executive session on that, Mr. Chair.
Okay, I get a motion?
So moved. Second?
I have a motion, second.
Is this one at a time?
Yes.
Thank you.
Deb, please call the roll.
Ms. Agnew?
Yes.
Ms. Costa?
Yes.
Ms. Har?
Yes.
Ms. Hetzel?
Yes.
Ms. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Ms. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Vice Chair? If Vice Chair would be able to read the second, request the second item.
Attorney Sod, is there a need to enter executive session on a different matter?
Yes, there would be. National Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A2. To conduct strategy in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel, including superintendent of schools, Matthew H. Malone, we would reconvene after executive session. There may or may not be statements at that time.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Seconded by Ms. Hetzel, seconded by Ms. Larrabee. Roll call.
Ms. Agnew?
Yes.
Ms. Costa?
Yes.
Ms. Har?
Yes.
Ms. Hetzel?
Yes.
Ms. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Kukka?
So we're going to go into executive session. I get a motion, second? Oh, we already did. Let's set up, guys.
I'd like to call the Power School Committee meeting for June the 21st back to order. Madam Secretary, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Agnew?
Here.
Ms. Costa?
Here.
Ms. Har?
Here.
Ms. Hetzel?
Here.
Ms. Corey?
Here.
Ms. Larrabee?
Here.
So just for the public certification, Mr. Hetzel, who was present, his transition, he's now joining us via Zoom, as indicated by his vote of presence, just so the record reflects that. Are there any motions to be made? Here or not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Made by Ms. Daggett, seconded by Ms. Corey. Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Ms. Agnew?
Yes.
Ms. Costa?
Yes.
Ms. Har?
Yes.
Ms. Hetzel?
Yes.
Ms. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
This meeting will stand adjourned.